Board docs? Where's our password? It's gonna be hard. Code here. Good evening. Welcome, everybody, to the November 6th meeting of the St. Mary's County Planning Commission. There are two sign-up sheets in the foyer for our hearing this evening. One is a sign-up sheet if you're speaking, and the other is a sign-up sheet just for attendees of these hearings. In case any further information needs to be sent to you regarding the cases, please sign in on these sheets. Our meeting is being recorded for the public record. Any comments made by anyone present must be recorded as part of the record. Therefore, if you have anything to say, you must come up to one of the microphones provided. Your comments cannot be recorded and placed in the record unless they are directed to a microphone. You are to direct your statements, questions, or responses to the board only, and we will direct them to the appropriate person for an answer. Please keep your comments to five minutes or less. Anyone testifying or asking questions during our public hearings will be required to take an oath. And please speak up close to the microphones, especially that one in the middle, if you would. Thank you for your cooperation. See, on our agenda this evening... After approval of minutes, our first public hearing this evening will be CWSP 23-0275 for Sullivan Sewer Service Area Amendment. That's a public hearing, followed by our second public hearing, CSP 23-0239, thank you, for the Weiss Market Gas &amp; Go in Callaway for their concept site plan. Okay, at this time, I'll let the board members introduce theirselves, starting on the end.
John Brown.
Kim Summers.
Patty Robrecht.
Howard Thompson.
Joe Van Kirk.
Joe St. Clair.
Admiral Evans.
Okay, also with us, our county staff, our Director of the Department of Land Use and Growth Management, Jessica Andrich. Her deputy director, Courtney Jenkins. Our planner is Brandy Glenn. Our planner three is Sean Lee Blasko. Our other planner is Carly Maltby. And our administrative coordinator this evening is Betty Nickerson. Also, let me look up before I... Okay. From our county staff this evening, our Assistant County Attorney, John Hauser, is here. Director of Department of Public Works and Transportation, Jim Gottsch. Okay. And our video media producer this evening is Amy Carter, and she has a new video media assistant. His name is Andrew Beckham. Beckman, I'm sorry. Beckman. Sneak in, which one? Oh, sorry, didn't see you coming. Anna Wells from the Metropolitan Commission is also here. Okay, did everybody get a chance to review the October 16th minutes? Is there any corrections, deletions? Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. St. Clair, and I have a second by Ms. Robrecht. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ellen, welcome back, Mr. Van Kirk.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Okay. All right, our first case this evening will be... Let me get to this. Will be CWSP 23-0275. That is for the... Sullivan, the amendment to change their category from S6 to S3D. The owner is Eric Joseph and Leila November Sullivan, and their developers Rory Fight and Tammy Fight. Anybody that's going to have anything to say about this case and staff, if you would, I'll go ahead and get everybody sworn in at this time. Do you declare and affirm under penalty of perjury that the testimony, responses, and statements you may give will be the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Thank you. Okay, Carly. Take it away.
Thank you.
It's all yours.
Good evening. The first agenda item is the Sullivan CWSP Amendment Case, CWSP 23... See now?
Get a little closer.
The first agenda item is the Sullivan CWSP Amendment Case, CWSP 23-0275. The applicant is requesting to amend the sewer categories, sewer service category from S6D to S3D. This amendment is requested to facilitate sewerage service for one single-family home. This property is located at 45536 Poplar Lane, Lexington Park. This is the current sewerage service map. The subject property is currently S6D. The property has been posted in accordance with 21.3.3 of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance. The certified mail receipts have been received and have been inserted into the record of this public hearing. The public notification requirements of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance, Section 21.3, have been met. The proposed CWSP amendment was distributed for review to the TEC agencies on August 15th, 2023. The proposed development lies within the Lexington Park Development District, a planned growth area. The comprehensive plan directs planned sewerage service to be provided to growth areas. This CWSP amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The proposed connection would serve a residential use approvable in the residential neighborhood conservation zoning. Currently, there is adequate availability at the Marley Taylor Water Reclamation Facility to accommodate one EDU. Staff anticipates that the proposed development will be found to be compatible with applicable state laws and programs. Technical Evaluation Committee comments from the Health Department and the Metropolitan Commission are attached to the staff report. There are no outstanding issues. This concludes the staff report, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions, the staff, at this time? Mr. Brown?
I have one question. In your, the pre-referee you sent to us, you had not received input from the state. I take it you have now?
On... Before the CWSP amendment is finalized, it must be reviewed by the state. So after it goes through this, we will send it to them for review. And it has been sent to them for review.
I can't hear you. You need to speak up or get closer to your mic.
It has been sent to...
It's been sent, but you stated that it had not been received from the state, which is why I was wondering why it was even before us tonight.
Good evening. I think there's some confusion. The staff report says that it has been sent to all applicable agencies, including the state. We just might not have received their comments back yet.
But basically, you need input for us back here. So my question is, why is it before us tonight if you haven't gotten the input back?
Well, it has to be finalized by the state. So after you make your recommendation, then it will...
But they're not contingent... The state recommendation is contingent on our approval or the vice versa?
Well, at this point, we haven't received anything from them saying that they are opposed to it.
Well, I'm just reacting to what you put down here on your input to us. It basically indicated that it was set up, but you're assuming that it will be approved.
Correct.
But that's all.
Right.
And I'm just asking a simple question. Why are we processing an unstaffed report that's not complete yet?
Typically, with CWSP amendments, it gets sent to MDE. If they have some opposition to it, we'll hear back from them. We have not heard anything back from them at this time, so we are assuming that they'll be okay with it. But once it goes through the approval process, and if it is finalized, then it does get sent to them as well. So we don't anticipate...
Okay, I'm not gonna beat it to death. I'm just asking the question.
Right. And I'm just saying we don't anticipate any issues with it. Thank you.
Before you go away, that's usually standard operating procedures on these, though, is it not?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Why, Chairman, why do we not wait until we get final approval from the state?
Because all the...
Standard procedure.
It's under my understanding that all the departments that needed to see it have seen it. If there were a problem, that we would hear back. But in the years that we've been up here, we don't normally get a letter that states this has been approved.
But somebody, you're telling me the state never acknowledges yes or no?
Well, by them not acknowledging, that's a yes. Has been so in the past.
Okay.
This is just, this is standard operating procedure. This is just moving a date in order to hook sewer up.
But the fact that they highlighted it in their note suggested that they're expecting an input back, yes or no. That's all I'm saying. That's why I'm bringing it up.
Okay. Any other questions, the staff, this time? Did the applicant want to come up and have anything to say? Okay. Then I'll open it up and pump for public testimony at this time. If there's anybody that has any comments on this case, questions, or statements to make, they can come up at this time. I don't think I have any... At this time, for this case. Anybody? Okay, then I'll go ahead and close public testimony and open it back up to the board for any... Oh, if you have something to say. I don't know if I swore you in, so if I didn't, I'll swear you in when you get up here. That's all right, come on up. Raise your right hand, please. Do you declare and affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony, responses, and statements you may give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Yes, sir. Can I have your name and address, please?
My name's Ed Waters. I'm at 45510 Poplar Lane.
Okay. Yes, sir, what can we do for you?
Only, we don't object to the petition for the Sullivan's to be neighbor. We're also on the MetCom service, so we were just concerned if, when this connection's approved and made, will we have an interruption of service? And if so, how are we gonna be notified and for how long?
Well, we happen to have the person from MetCom that can answer that question for you this evening. Let her come in. If you're finished.
Okay, yes, I am.
If we have any other questions for you, I'll call you back up. Thank you.
Anna Wells with MetCom. So there won't be any interruption to service. The process is, in order to connect, they'll just do a tap into the sewer main, so we can notify you if there's any issues with that, but there won't be any interruptions, so.
Okay. Is anybody else? Okay, I'll go ahead and close public testimony and open it back up to the board. Is there anything the board, anybody on the board want to discuss anything?
This is just sewer, right?
Yes, sir.
Just the sewer part? Okay.
If nobody has anything to discuss...
The one question I do have is, our approval is contingent on the state not being negative, right? Since we're waiting on an input from them, bring that issue up again.
Mr. Hauser, you want...
Will they be proceeding without... In other words, what happens if the state comes back?
Then they don't get it.
Then they don't get it.
John Hauser, Assistant County Attorney, to answer the question, Mr. Brown, your approval does not withstand disapproval by the state. If the Planning Commission says yes tonight, and if the state should come back for any reason and disapprove and find that the proposed amendment is inconsistent with state laws and regulations, nullifies any vote tonight.
About what?
It nullifies any action tonight. You're not gonna be able to countermand the state's decision on this one.
Our approval really is contingent upon state. Correct?
In the sense that, we wouldn't ask you to phrase it that way, but the vote tonight, if you do vote in the affirmative, would be rendered moot if the state comes back in the negative. I think the advantage to the applicant of going forward tonight in spite of that possibility, again, staff believes with some confidence that the state is going to approve this. The second thing is, we are letting the applicant move forward and be able to run these processes in parallel, which is allowed, is standard operating procedures, Mr. Thompson noted earlier, and does have the effect of allowing the applicant to get final approval much more quickly than the other would, so long as the applicant's comfortable rolling the dice, knowing that the state might come back in the negative.
They're basically doing it at their risk.
They're doing it at their risk, correct.
Before you go, John, so this, you know, these water and sewer category changes, sorry, these water and sewer category changes come up all the time. And I am a proponent of them not coming before us. I think these things should be done administratively, and I've said it before. I'm not aware of any developer-financed water and sewer category changes that have gone from six to three that have ever been, that have ever been denied. I, I don't, I think it's this process, coming to the Planning Commission for something like this, probably should fall as a responsibility to the director. And I mean, I understand that it's probably not the way it's written right now, John, but I think that probably it should be looked at. Go ahead.
I remember the conversation, I remember the themes, and I remember I promised you, Mr. Evans, that we would look into it. It could be addressed at the local level, but beyond that, state law does say right now, and it's particular to St. Mary's County, don't ask me what history is on that, it was about two decades before I was born, but state law says the Planning Commission for St. Mary's County and St. Mary's County only has to be the first kind of beach these types of requests land upon. It would take a fix, it would just have to be pushed through at Annapolis before we could do anything locally.
I just don't know what we, as a volunteer board, could do to get, to deny a water and sewer category change that's going to be paid for by a developer to move forward if, in fact, the EDU's available. It makes no common sense to me, John. I'm sorry.
Common sense is not part of the game, is it?
It is where I grew up, so... I'm sorry, John, I didn't mean to give you...
Very eloquently said.
Thank you, I appreciate the time.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Okay, is there anything else? If there isn't, I'll entertain a motion from somebody on the board. Anybody want to make a motion?
I don't see the motion in here, so I will recite the proposed proposal. The proposal.
You've done them before.
Okay, yeah.
I have confidence in you.
I move that we amend the sewer service category from S6D service in six to 10 years, developer-financed, to S3D service in 35-year developer-financed for 0.68 acres, described as tax map 35A, grid 15, parcel 0007, in the 8th Election District, tax ID 013136. The property is located at 45536 Poplar Lane in Lexington Park, Maryland. This amendment is requested to facilitate the sewage service for one single-family dwelling.
I'll second.
Have a motion, I have a second by Mr., from Mr. Evans, I have a second by Mr. Brown.
Quick discussion.
Discussion on the motion.
Could we possibly need to add the fact that it needs to be forwarded to the Commissioners of St. Mary's County, which it says in the packet? Would that be, I mean, I don't know if that needs to be put in there, or...
Would you take as amendment?
That's fine with me.
Friendly amendment?
Do you second that? Okay.
Since this property is located in the Lexington Park Development District, it will not be forwarded to the Commissioners of St. Mary's County. It will go to the Planning Director for final approval.
Okay.
Thank you.
There you go.
There we go.
See, you get paid to do those sort of things.
Yeah, I'm just...
Good for you.
Okay, everyone in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank y'all. Okay, moving right along. Gears here. Okay, our second hearing of the evening, public hearing, is for Concept Site Plan number P23-0239 for Weiss Market Gas &amp; Go. It's the first time I've had to enlarge this. Glasses aren't pulling me. For Weiss Market Gas &amp; Go, the owner is Food Lion LLC. Agent is Barrett. And the action requested is a review of a concept site plan for 2,295 square-foot gas pump canopy and 204 square-foot attendant kiosk. Everybody that's going to be either making statements or testifying tonight or giving information, if you would stand at this time, and I'll swear you in. And also, because my memory isn't gonna remember all these people, I'll ask you when you come up tonight if I got to swear you in. I can usually remember that side of the room, but I tend to waver on that side of the room. Do you declare and affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony, responses, and statements you may give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Sean Lee, switch up. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Agenda item two is a concept site plan, CSP 23-0239 for Weiss Market Gas &amp; Go. The concept site plan seeks approval for a six-pumps gas station and an attendant kiosk. The site is located in Maryland Route 5, Point Lookout Road, Callaway, next to the existing Weiss Market. The land use is a mixed-use, low-intensity, and the zoning is the VMX, Village Center Mixed Use. Per the comprehensive plan, Village Center Mixed Use is to provide opportunities for residential and commercial development at location and at a scale designated by comprehensive plan. It's not intended to create an urban character. Fuel sale use of number 60. Establishments engaged in retail dispensing of sale of vehicular fuels and lubricants or household propane. The public notice for this, for the Planning Commission public hearing was published in Southern Maryland News on October 20th and October 27th. The property has been posted in accordance to CZO requirements, Section 21.3.3. Certified mail receipts have been received and have been entered into the record of this public hearing as Exhibit 1. The agenda was posted on the website on October 31st. The concept site plan was distributed for review by TEC agencies on July 14, 2023. The use of fuel sales number 60 is permitted use in the Village Center Mixed Use zoning district. For all non-residential and multifamily residential projects that require major site plan approval, a concept site plan shall, shall first be approved by the Planning Commission before the major site plan may be processed for approval by the Planning Director. This is a public hearing which enables all who wish to provide information to the Planning Commission in order to approve the concept site plan. The Planning Commission shall make of the findings that the proposed development is consistent with the comprehensive plan and applicable functional plans, may be served by adequate public facilities as required by Section 70.2.2. Will promote the health, safety, and welfare of the general public. Adequately developed recreational and other community amenities are provided in accordance with the comprehensive plan and the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance. Is consistent with Chapter 62 Design objectives. There are outstanding issues. The applicant must obtain an approval from the director to reduce the required number of parking spaces from nine spaces to two spaces. And the level of service at both entrances on Maryland Route 5 and Maryland Route 249 is level of service D based on the APF report. This concludes the staff report and is entered into the record of this public hearing as Exhibit 2. Joe Kajewski from COA. Barrett is here representing the applicant. Is there any question for me?
Any questions, the staff, this time? Mr. Brown?
For the record, and I think it may pop up later, with some questions from public, I remember being on a board where we approved the 7-Eleven on that square on the corner. I know, that was quite a while ago. I would just wonder, is that still in effect, that concept site plan, or is it, or is that time expired?
Mr. Brown, I'd have to, I'd have to look into that, I'm not sure.
So we possibly are dealing tonight with an additional gas station in that geographical area. We don't know yet.
Perhaps. So a concept site plan is valid for two years after approval?
Well, that's, but it's close to two years, I just didn't know, that's why I'm asking the question.
It's fired, but I don't know off the top of my head when it was approved.
All right.
Have to look into it.
I was hoping we'd get that off the table.
Okay, any other questions, the staff? Okay, would the applicant or their representative come up at this time?
Good evening, board members. Joe Kajewski with COA Barrett. To my left is Jack O'Hara with Weiss Markets, and Mike Lenhart with Lenhart Traffic.
What was his name again? I'm sorry.
Jack O'Hara.
Thank you. So, as mentioned by staff, the proposed project is located within the existing commercial subdivision of Callaway Marketplace. It was originally subdivided in 2001 into five lots. Lot 3 consists of the existing supermarket and parking, and we're proposing a small self-serve, essentially six-pump fuel station on lot, adjoining Lot 3. It's been referred to, I guess, as a gas station, but really it is just fuel sales only with a small kiosk, so six pumps and a 204-square-foot kiosk, with the general ideas that most folks visiting the supermarket will hopefully visit the gas station as well. So it's supplemental to, an accessory to, the existing supermarket. Just a little bit of background on the site itself. The infrastructure for the commercial subdivision was put in with the existing supermarket, including all the proposed accesses off of Route 5 and also off of Piney Point Road. Stormwater management was addressed with an existing, or with an extended detention pond that we are going to utilize for quantity management. We're also proposing two micro fire retention areas for... But we're also proposing two micro fire retention areas for, to address water quality off the impervious surfaces. Pollution prevention on the site will be state-of-the-art, it will consist of leak detection and spill prevention within the gas service area. Also, the fuel dispensing area is encircled by a proposed trench drain to collect any spills that may occur, which then is directed through a oil-water separator before any discharge to the fire retention areas. Staff did mention we are requesting a reduction in the number of parking spaces from what is required by the ordinance of nine to providing two parking spaces. Again, all service really will be at the fuel pumps themselves, and parking is really just provided for one attendant. The prop, the proposed development is set back over three hundred feet from Maryland Route Five, and the tree clearing will be minimal in that area, so a buffer will remain. We are separated from the properties to the west by Granddaddy Lane, which is an existing gravel drive that is continued to be used by the properties to the rear. And we're separated by the rear property by the stormwater management pond and also all existing vegetation. The ordinance requires twenty percent of the site area to be vegetated, which ends up being about thirty-two thousand four hundred and nine square feet. We are maintaining fifty-eight thousand two hundred and seventy-one square feet of vegetated area, so well and above the twenty percent requirement. Obviously, I think you're all aware that traffic is going to be a hot topic this evening, and that's why Mike is here. Mike, if you want to just lead in a little bit onto that part?
Certainly. For the record, Michael Lenhart with Lenhart Traffic Consulting. I'd like to just cover a few items. First of all, looking back to the original approval of this subdivision. Traffic impact study was conducted in November of nineteen ninety-nine. That study was based upon thirty thousand, thirty-seven thousand square foot supermarket, eleven thousand square foot pharmacy, four thousand square foot fast food restaurant, plus an additional forty-three thousand square feet of retail. And that subdivision was approved, was platted and lotted out. There were improvements that were specified to be made to handle that subdivision. Those have been built with the access and involved left turn lanes on Route Five, Axel D cell lanes as required by the state. Those have all been done in support of what was reviewed and approved for that entire subdivision back in nineteen ninety-nine. At that time, when it was approved, everything was found to operate at a level of service C or better with the full build-out of the site.
So reaffirm again, it was C at the time of approval?
At the time of the original approval of the subdivision, everything was a C or better, and I will, if you bear with me, I will tell you. Maryland Five at Two-Forty-Nine was a B in the morning and a C in the evening. Route Five at Hunting Quarter Road and the site access was a B in the morning and a C in the evening. Two-Forty-Nine at the site access was an A in the morning and evening. Those were projections for full build-out of the site. And again, henceforth, it was approved, and the improvements to support that development were constructed. Forward to today, again, supermarket and six thousand square feet of retail are the only things that have been built to date. You know, the market, for whatever reason, hasn't brought it forth as quickly as they would like, but they are moving forward with this next component. We conducted, we did not conduct new traffic counts or analyses because the original approval assumed substantially more traffic than what has been built to date, and the improvements have been put in place to support the full build-out. We did do a traffic generation analysis for this use. The six fueling positions, according to the I T E trip generation manual, there are several components to the trip generation. One is internal trips, one is pass-by trips, and one are new trips. So the internal trips are people that go to the grocery store, they shop, and while they're there, before they leave, they stop and get gas, or they get gas first and then they go to the grocery store. In my understanding, Weiss has a program where when they shop in the store, you have an account, you get points that add to your account, and the more points you get, you get discounts on your gas at certain times when they have their promotional runs. And so you have internal trips, those are, there's zero traffic generated on the road network by those internal trips because they're already at the store, they're getting gas. The other are pass-by trips, those are people that are driving up and down Route Five. You know, maybe they live to the north, they're going down to the base via Route Five or elsewhere, and they stop in to get gas, and then they continue on their trip. Those are pass-by trips, they're not considered to be new traffic on the road network because they're already there. The new trips are somebody, you know, lives a mile up the street, they decide they want gas and gas only. They drive down, they get gas, and they drive back out. This use is primarily going to be internal trips, that people combining trips with their shopping or pass-by. I T E empirical data shows that gas stations, fifty to sixty percent of gas trips are pass-by trips that are already on the road. And that doesn't take into account the people that are specifically doing it when they're combining with a grocery trip. And so what our study showed that this site will generate, thirteen, take out internal trips, take out pass-by trips, thirteen new trips in the morning peak hour, and that's the equivalent of, if you round it to fourteen, it's like seven people going in to get gas, seven people coming out. That's, that equates to about one every ten minutes. One trip every ten minutes. In the evening peak hour, it would be twenty new trips, that's one in and one out. The equivalent of one every maybe nine, nine minutes or so. Or, I'm sorry, one every six, I had that backwards. But in any event, one every seven to nine minutes roughly, which is negligible, it won't be notable by people that live in the area, you're not going to notice the difference from this. And I would also then point to, you know, that there's the P A P F form that was filled out, because we did not do new traffic counts for this, I think there was some assumptions that the level of service is D, and so the P A P F form just has a level of service D on it. I actually went to the State Highway website, they have a traffic counting database. They've conducted traffic counts at Five and King's Christian, just to the east of here on Route Five. In March first of two thousand twenty-two, the level of service at that intersection, based on State Highway's counts on their database, is level of service A in the morning and a B in the evening. Route Five at Flatiron Road and Route Four Seventy-One, a little further east, on April twenty-sixth of two thousand twenty-three was a level of service B in the morning and a C in the evening. We conducted traffic counts for the seven-eleven store that you referenced, that was on the other corner of the intersection. Those counts we conducted, and we're in two thousand nineteen, just pre-pandemic. That was a level of service B in the morning and a B in the evening. And so that was a little older than the State Highway counts, but even the State Highway counts at April of two thousand twenty-three at Flatiron Road, that intersection has essentially the same traffic volumes on Route Five that are flowing up through Two-Forty-Nine. And I would opine that, based upon the counts of Five and King's Christian, Five at Flatiron, that the intersections here are no worse than a B or a C as well. However, I would revert, I say that for informational purposes, I believe that the deciding factor here is this property had an approved traffic impact study and an approved subdivision, and it was lotted and platted. The improvements were put in place to support what was approved, and at that time, it was a C or better based upon that build-out. And I believe that those approvals, those vesting, at that time is really what is critical in this point.
So where did the D come from? It's.
I think it, I don't know, I think when it got filled out, somebody assumed it, and they're due, I think that the P A P F form also does have a.
I mean, it's something in there that's, you're really saying that the D shouldn't be there?
I don't think that the D should be there, that's correct.
Well, I'm hearing you say.
I think that was an error, inadvertent. And I believe the P A P F form, at least it did have a D that was kind of pre-populated in there, and maybe that was misinterpreted or whatnot, but I don't believe it is a level of service D today, today.
I don't know, traveling through there doesn't seem like it was an A or a B to me. I understand. I'm not saying what it was today or April twenty-first or whatever, but there were some old reports in the county's website, the old comprehensive plans and stuff that showed everything around Great Mills Road and Route Five up to King's Christian area or further up to Two-Forty-Nine was E and F, D E and F. I don't see how it's improved with no more improvements than what you did twenty-four years ago. You know, for that, there's been some other, other minor things done, but I've always questioned these levels that people come up with. It just does not seem to be, I don't know, I don't drive that all the time anymore, but it seems to be that a B and a C is stretching it for me. But would you discuss the improvements that you did, that was done back on something that was approved in nineteen ninety-nine?
Certainly, it involved the widening of Route Five to provide turn lanes in and out of the site, including left turn lanes on Route Five.
Into this site?
Into this site and into Hunting Quarter. There, previously to that, there were no left turn lanes on the road. So they did put in left turn lanes, and then they, I have an aerial image here as well. Axel D cell lanes along eastbound Route Five into the site, along the entire frontage of the site, all the way up to Two-Forty-Nine, and a D cell lane into Hunting Quarter, and left turn lanes in both directions on Route Five into the site and into Hunting Quarter.
So what was done at the time would have accommodated the entire build-out?
That's correct.
Was stormwater management planned and installed for the entire build-out at the time, or?
That is a little bit unclear to me, I've gone back and looked at the reports. A large extended detention pond was constructed, I believe it was for the entire build-out. We are reviewing the report to kind of ensure that. It doesn't specifically spell it out, it just, you know, gives you kind of areas of imperviousness. But it seems like it's to the right scale to support the full build-out for, from a two thousand regulations. Now, obviously, we're in, new regulations from stormwater management are providing environmental site design, I'm sure you've heard of that, for the proposed work in addition to what's already there as far as the existing pond.
Okay. Clarify one thing for me, since it's not clear in some of these drawings that I'm looking at. Where is the entrance into the site? It's really hard to tell on what I'm looking at.
Entrance into the total center or the, our site itself?
Into this what's being proposed? Fuel sales.
Do you have a copy of this?
Um, I can see that.
Okay. So it's basically in line with the existing store, so this is our proposed entrance here into the fuel center.
So they actually come in the same entrance that they use to get to the Weiss?
Correct, yep.
And then they shoot off of that into there?
Correct.
Okay.
When you were talking about stormwater management, I noticed you have a retention pond now that would be underneath the service station. Are you planning on?
Underneath the what?
Where you're planning on putting the pumps? It looks like that stormwater facility that they have right now, are you going over top of that?
No, sir.
You're building out closer to the road? I'm just looking at the, I'm looking at the St. Mary's County website, and then I'm looking at, on your, on your report, on this, well, let me go to the top here real quick. This is on your concept site plan. It shows the lot that's closest to the Route Five, and then it shows you're going on to the second, I'll say, divisional lot line to build that. And then you have the existing stormwater management. You're going to utilize that for this, for this service station also?
The existing pond? Yes, we are discharging to that pond.
Are you changing anything to that pond?
No, sir.
So there's a possibility you could have runoff or anything from that service station that could possibly go into that stormwater management pond?
Yes, we are discharging to the pond, again, as we, as far as any fuel spills or anything like that, as I explained, we have a trench drain on the downstream side of all the fuel pumps that is collecting anything that goes through a oil grid or oil-water separator before then discharging to the fire retention areas, which then discharge to the pond. So there's a treatment train in place, you know, for any runoff that may contain oil or gasoline.
And if this was to go forward, what kind of buffer are you putting, I'll say, in between the back of the service station and I guess that's Granddad Way that's behind that?
Yeah, so Granddaddy Lane is actually part of this subdivision, so it's on what's called Parcel A. There's multiple easements over that parcel granting access to the existing drive itself. At minimum, we've got twenty feet, twenty-five feet of vegetation at the closest point, and farther up, it varies from twenty to, say, thirty-five feet of existing trees that are remaining in place.
And any lighting that you're going to utilize on that site will all be downlighting? Or anything be spilling over into neighboring, into Mr.?
That's correct.
James Coombs, James Coombs and Charlene Pizzadilly's lot that's next door?
That's correct, so it'll all be downlighting from the canopy and will not go past any of the property lines.
Mr. Lenhart, all your computations and such, you're saying that everything for the seven-eleven that's still on the books to be built there was counted in on this as far as level of services and everything, the intersections? Did you include both of these in on that?
So the, we did not do an updated traffic study for Callaway Marketplace that would include any other background, any other recently approved background developments.
Why?
Typically, when a project gets approved, it becomes background for future projects, and so you would include, seven-eleven would have included, you know, other approved background but not yet built projects in their traffic study. This project wouldn't go back, because it was approved in ninety-nine or early two thousands, it wouldn't go back and add projects that were approved after it was.
Well, this seven-eleven was just done with. Well, this 7-Eleven was just done within the last two years. Why wouldn't you add that in with the computations for this?
Well, again, because we didn't do a new traffic impact study for this. We're, we are using and relying upon the approved traffic study from this, even though it's old, from the late 90s.
Things have changed, though. This is 24 years ago.
Well, I think it's also important to note that the traffic generated by this, and you can confirm this, Mike, limited amount of traffic generated by this use is lower than the threshold for St. Mary's County DPW requiring a traffic study.
That's correct. Typically, it's 50 peak hour trips would require a full traffic study. Again, this was
13 and 20 or something?
And 20 peak hour trips. So it wouldn't require a traffic study?
I'm concerned with this because, I mean, you have a Dollar Store, I think it's called, I'm not sure, Dollar General Dollar Store. It's worth a dollar. Then you have the 7-Eleven that's been approved. You have a church that I think has approval to build on to it. I'm not sure, that's been a while back, but they did get approval across the street. And then you've got to, you come in with a 24-year-old traffic study. I know it's not, maybe it's not completely required, but I think it would have been smart to do, you know, to look in on this neighborhood. Plus, you're talking about this shopping center could actually build on. You, how, what's the percentage of what's built on to this lot now that you said could, I think you, what was it, like half? Less than half?
Less than half.
Double the traffic, right there, you know, coming in. Then you have the Hunting Quarter across the way. You have the, I still call it Hewitt Lumber. You have the white room across the street, and the restaurant that's across the street. You've got a lot of business going on in there. And then, like I say, you want to put a service station, which only has six pumps, but it brings more traffic in. And you've also said in your testimony that this has been approved and could be doubled in size. I don't think it was
Per the traffic study, I don't think with the current regulations that the property would support the development that was originally contemplated. But we didn't study, you know, how much we could fit on there either.
What I'm trying to say, the study hasn't been done.
I'd just also say that if this use had generated more than 50 peak hour trips, I think DPW would have required a traffic study be updated for the project. But again, it's, you know, those thresholds are there, kind of for a reason, so that if you have a smaller development, not to put you through that traffic study expense.
And as far as those XL and D cell lanes, that one that's heading, I'll say, south on 5, that comes into 249, I drive it most every day. I release at least once going to my job. And that's like a launching pad going down through there. You know, I mean, people, people pass the traffic on 5 going down to turn on to 249. It's like a launching site. I just think a study should, it's my opinion, my own opinion, I think, I think a study should have been done a little bit more, find out what's going on in there. And say, y'all are basing yourself on a 24-year-old site plan. Everything's changed. I mean, more people are home nowadays, you know, they're not going into the base, now they're home. Now they go to the grocery store during the day. They didn't used to do that. It used to be strictly on the weekends and the evenings. Now they go during the day. I can go by there. Like I say, I go there a lot of times. Sometimes I stop and get a sandwich. But that lot, we got a great business. I mean, it's, it's, it's going very good there. I've got concerns with that.
I'd like to add, add one point and clarify one point if I could. Sir, you asked why the PAPF form had a level of service D on it?
Yeah.
It, as I look at it, it actually says less than or equal to level of service D. And I should have put less than or equal to level of service C. That's my mistake. It's because it is in the outside of the development district, and based upon the other traffic counts that I noted, it would be within reason to do so. I just
That it should be D or C? I didn't
It should be a C or better.
Okay.
That's what I should have put in the, that was my error in what I put on the form. It should have said C or better, just to comply with what the
Despite what the chairman may think, it really is.
And I understand, you know
What was that?
No, well, he said it's, that it should have been a C, and even though we've all experienced other issues.
And I understand, everybody has their personal experience. All I can tell you is, from the State Highway website, I have three separate traffic counts that are better than, well, C or better.
When was their traffic count, Stone?
March of '22, April of '23, and April of '23, all along that section. And they were all C or better. And those, they're not my counts, those are state highway data and analysis.
The state highway in them counts, I know when people come in with new traffic impact studies, they make them use a factor, a COVID factor, because traffic's not back to what it was. The state highway use?
That's all done. The state, in the summer of '21, the state issued a report saying that travel was basically back to pre-COVID levels. Now, in my experience, some areas, during the peak periods, it has recovered. It's, some areas, it's more than recovered, some areas it's not quite recovered. But it's, State Highway has issued data showing that it has recovered.
So there's no factor you guys use anymore, like you used to a year ago or so?
We have not used factors since the spring of '22, and that was in Prince George's County, because most of their county, most of this was still virtual through '22. So we had to apply factor.
And Mr. Chairman, just a quick note for the board. I was told by the previous planning director that at any time this board wanted a traffic impact study, we had the right to ask for that. I'm not saying we're asking for, I'm just saying that, he told me in a meeting that we had the right to ask for a TIS if that's what the board decided to do, any project, whether it's required or not by the 50 peak trip. So I'm just, was, I don't know if that's, you know, Mr. Hauser could probably answer that, but I, we had been told that. I'm not saying I'm asking for that, but we have that right as far as I
Okay. If and when we get to that point, we'll
Mr. Evans? With regard to the numbers you've shared with us from the state, does the state just randomly do counts? Or there has to be a reason for those?
They have a statewide traffic counting program, and they're, and I worked for State Highway for 10 years back in the 90s. And there might be citizens' complaints at certain intersections, certain places throughout the county, some places the state just, they want to go out and get updated counts. And they'll do that periodically. So it's
I'm just, I'm wondering whether or not those, that information came, is coming by way of some expectation or anticipation of some roadwork that we're, we're hoping will happen between Great Mills and Route 249. I don't know that that's the case. But a couple of other questions. I travel there at least three or four times a day. And I will, and I've been doing this a while. The other morning, I pulled out to go towards Great Mills, east on Great Mills, 100 yards in, I stopped. That's because the traffic was queued from there to the bottom of Great Mills Hill. So my suggestion to you is that Ds don't operate at A, B, or C at all. They don't, they don't. They may midday, but beyond that, morning, evening, that just isn't, that's just not, not accurate. The other question I have is, are the, are the improvements that were done in anticipation of constructing this thing back in the day, '99, I guess, are those improvements vested in perpetuity? You made, well, what I'm saying is that, you know, they, you came through with a plan, and to get the plan to move forward, you made some, whoever did, made commitments, and those commitments were taken care of. We're 24 years later, and these gentlemen have said the same thing. Are the, are what you are referring to?
Yes.
Are they vested 24 years hence?
I would offer that in many jurisdictions, now, I don't know that I've dealt with that specifically here in St. Mary's County, but in many jurisdictions that we work in, it is. It's, it's property right, you go through the approval, you get your entitlements, you have plaits, you make improvements to support it, and it becomes a vested right. And we do a lot of work in Prince George's County, particularly there, it's, it becomes a property right. And because when other developments come in in the future, the way you do traffic impact studies is you look at existing traffic, then you add traffic from developments that have been approved but not yet built, and that becomes a background condition. And then you add the site traffic. And so, you know, in all jurisdictions, that's the way it's done. And I would opine that the background traffic, once you become a background development, you're approved, that you are vested. Now, legality, I guess, could be argued, I don't know, but that's
And I don't know either. Just a question, I didn't know whether it's vested or not. We have planned unit developments here that don't expire. They don't expire.
Yeah.
It doesn't mean that the situation where they find themselves hasn't changed. We just had one recently that was 20 some odd years
Sure.
old. And it's, it'll, maybe it'll move forward, maybe it won't. I don't know, it's to be phased. But all that traffic, not, it's not directly going to impact you folks, but it's going to directly impact Great Mills Road.
Right.
And so I just, I'm having a hard time getting my head around using information, traffic information, some, you know, that's 24 years old. And I'm not really sure about where the state's getting its numbers from or why. And again, it could be that they're, you're talking about what's going to happen or perhaps might happen in that stretch of road. I mean, I just don't know. I do know, living proximate to this location and shopping Weiss, it is a very, very difficult intersection. I mean, to a point, you know, and I will say this, take it for what, you know, when 7-Eleven came forward, all these gas stations are not sustainable. They just aren't. Someone's, they're not sustainable. So another question I have is, with regard to Weiss, does Weiss own that property?
We lease the property that our store is on. We will, we're the contract owner of the location, the parcel, that will be the gas and go.
So currently, Food Lion, according to the general notes, owns that property? You guys lease it from them?
No, actually, Food Lion owns the piece of property we're buying.
Ah.
We actually, we lease the property from, and I forget my landlord's name, but it's separate, a different entity.
Okay. And the reason I'm, the reason I'm getting to this is that I don't believe all these gas stations are sustainable. And that's not for me to say. You want to build a gas station and it's approval, you build it. Whether it succeeds or not, I don't have anything to, you know, to do with that. I mean, I don't. But I'm just wondering, the reason I'm asking about the land, I'm wondering if in fact Weiss decides not to be in the gas business any longer, who's going to be the proud owner of that gas pump on that piece of property?
Weiss will.
Weiss will, yeah, right.
Until they sell it, right.
Yeah. And then you have to deal with that, because we've, in the past, we've also had parcels that were, gas stations went out of business, and then, and then, you know, you have that whole process where you have to come in, the tank's got to go, state comes in and does all that kind of stuff. I wish everybody well here, I'm the capitalists. But I will tell you that in this, where we're talking about, it's really, really difficult to get around right now. And I just have a hard time dealing with the numbers from 24 years ago. I just have a hard time living in St. Mary's County with numbers that, from five years ago, because of the adding, you know, people there that are showing up here. So I don't have, I don't have an answer, but I will share that with regard to traffic study, I don't know where the state gets those numbers from, but I can't imagine not moving forward without having a traffic study on this, on this project, so.
If I may, on the gas or fuel at supermarkets, it is, it is a, not a recent trend, but it's a common trend.
Could you get closer to the line?
I'm sorry, it's a, it's a common trend, an offering by supermarkets selling gas. We have just under 200 stores, we have 60 stations, and we're, we have five or six that are in planning stages. And our next four new stores will have gas, that are scheduled to have gas. So it is an offering that we, we look, we find it is important to, you know, continue our business.
Food stores generally, sometimes even have a relationship with a gas, a gas service place, has a relationship, you get points or whatever. Harris Teeter did the same thing. But Harris Teeter didn't have a place to put theirs. So they put it
Down the road.
Back on 235.
Right. And that we, many, many supermarkets do have programs, cooperation programs with different fuel, fuel purveyors, whether it's Sunoco, Sheetz, Wawa. So that is something that we do, do, we do do. We, we do have relationships. However, we find that it's a much better offering for our customers. And I'll be very honest, for our business, that it's on our lot or very close to our lot, because we, part of the offering is that the more groceries you buy, the more savings you get on gas.
This is a very attractive intersection for gas stations. I mean, and it just has been. It was an Esso station there originally, where the Callaway Center is. And then along the way, we wind up with, I'm not sure what was with 7-Eleven, it went away within two weeks. So I'm not sure about that either. So anyway, I'm having a difficult time with these traffic counts. Having go, driving through there two or three times a day, and traffic just is never easy. It just isn't. And I will say that, you know, some of the comments from the people from Hunting Quarters, I went by there today and purposely went into Hunting Quarters and came back out. And then I timed it. It was about two to three minutes. Doesn't sound like much unless you're number five in line. You're number three or four or five in line, and it can be difficult getting out. And I don't know what to do about that either. So.
I have a quick, just one thing. Mr. O'Hara, can I just get your, I've got your name, but I didn't get your business address before you spoke this evening. Could you?
Okay. Jack O'Hara, I'm Vice President of Legal Affairs and Real Estate for Weiss Markets. We're headquartered in Sunbury, Pennsylvania at 1,000 South Second Street.
Thank you, sir.
That's okay. I just had a quick add-on to what Mr. Evans had asked Mr. Lenhart about, was the project vested? And I would tend to believe from other projects that it probably was. But the problem I have with that, I don't know if anybody's thought about it, is when you did your improvements, it was based upon, like this says, a 37,000 square foot supermarket, 11,000 square foot pharmacy, and so much retail. And even though you didn't build that, somebody else did around there. So the road improvements have, you're saying there hasn't been that much stuff built on that corridor?
What's in the traffic study was for the, all that was going to be fit within this subdivision?
But you still got to come out on the road where I'm talking about.
I understand that.
I have to traverse the roads is the only thing I'm saying. I'm saying it wasn't built there, but it was built within a two-mile, more than that was built within where you're, where you've put the turn lanes and the stuff. You've had, I would assume in 24 years, more than the square footage that you guys had planned, was built, is all I'm saying. So the roads are handling more than the square footage that you put in mitigation for. So my point is, where I believe your mitigation was valid at the time, even though you're not generating many trips, and I agree with that, you know, that it's a minimal impact, but we've had, we've had things that did five or 10 trips, and there's always some sort of mitigation, even though you did it, just because you didn't use it at the time, somebody else did. And it's just the way I'm looking at it, that, you know, there wasn't as much traffic in 1999 through there as it is now. That's the point I'm saying. So I'm just trying to say that I agree with what Mr. Evans was saying, that it probably was a legitimate, what you did is probably still legitimate, with the fact that you have what you did, it was done, it was appreciated. But, you know, there's more know, there's more traffic that use it now, just because you didn't build it, you know, it's still being used, is my point, the way I look at things, but just wanted to clarify that point that I was thinking. That's all I have.
If I may?
Mm-hmm.
I appreciate that point, but we talked, when we discussed how traffic impact is analyzed and pre-existing or planned, developments or existing developments are taken into account, it seems like we're being penalized because perhaps in prior additions, where other buildings got built in the area, did not improve the road system to accommodate those cars. I think, because what I'm hearing is, and we're open for suggestions, is we need to take into account pre-existing or planned, correct me if I'm wrong on that, right, additions to the traffic, when we would present a project. So that was done, and it was before, we weren't the original project developer, but that was done, and that goes to the vesting, I guess, or the, you know, the entitlement, if you will, to those, the ability to build your property because you invested and made the improvements that were required to make that original investment and construction. That's all, so.
I agree with what you're saying, the only thing I was, my point was that if you had to do a new traffic impact study, all the other infrastructure that's around that Callaway area, subdivisions, buildings, whatever, would have to be taken into consideration now, and they would make you look at that.
I understand, and is it, are you looking at-
Not looking to penalize you, I'm just saying that that's how I was looking at the fact of-
And I appreciate that, yeah.
Sure. That's all I have.
We're meandering around, but one simple question. What are the planned hours of operation? Because I do know that the old 7/11, if it existed, at that time was planned to be 24/7. So I just trying to, is it just the operation that the store itself is going to be open, or what?
At the present time, we operate the same hours our store opens, is open. So if we're open 7 to 11, the fuel facility will be open 7 to 11. If we're open 10 to, until 10 o'clock at night, they close at 10 o'clock.
Okay, so it'll be the same as, it's planned to be the same as the store?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I'm-
What else you have for us, sir?
I think that's it, just to reiterate that it is, you know, 13 a.m. trips, 20 p.m. trips, alone by itself, it shouldn't generate the need for a traffic study, and that would be it. I mean, we're here for questions if more arise.
Let's discuss the reduction in parking real quick. Is that, for Mr. O'Hara, probably, is that standard with the other ones that you have at the other places? They don't seem to need much parking?
Yes, what we have here is six fueling positions and a 200 square foot kiosk, that's for our associates to be there to basically keep an eye on what's going on. We sell cigarettes, candy, sometimes lottery, but there's only, usually those purchases are made by people who are pumping gas at the time. We don't have a situation where people, it's not a convenience store that you could walk into and shop, you can only go to the window and ask for a quart of oil, whatever it might be.
So I guess what I was asking is, your other Weiss stores that have pumps, do they all not provide much parking either, just typically?
We typically provide parking for an associate and a handicap parking also.
Have you thought about, maybe not now, but in the future, of possibly some spaces for electric? You know, it always seems to come up with our meetings.
We are reviewing our options as it relates to electric charging, and we will be, at some point, be in the electric charging business, as are most of the most gas stations, we believe, and retailers.
Do you have space there?
We could put, we could have space there.
Even after you finish this, are you going to, you know, possibly have an area that, off to the side, you know, without running, if you don't do anything underground now, it seems like it would behoove you to think about that?
This particular property would allow us space to add a charging station, yes. Correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we do have some extra.
We have some, I mean, even with the existing paving that we have now, we have some unused space in and around where the, you know, the truck would, is pulling to fuel, you know, fill up the fuel. So that could work, I also wonder, I think it's kind of a business decision, but would it make more sense to have them closer to the supermarket, so that you're charging your vehicle while you go into, you know, a little closer proximity to-
I have been seeing that in-
Supermarket, yeah.
Some other places. Harris Teeter has that here by their supermarket.
So.
Giant does the same thing.
Haven't thought that all the way through, but-
That makes more sense.
Yeah, I think that probably makes more sense, is to use some of the existing spaces.
Just a question.
And it's something we are looking at also, too.
Okay, thank you.
Can I come back to your parking question? It's one spot was really for the attendant, and the other is because you're being mandated a handicap spot, is that what it boils down to? As opposed to having two, if you were having your attendant have his place, and then if somebody had a question, he'd be able to park, not at the pump and block the pump, but could, because otherwise, he's not going to be allowed to park in the handicap spot.
That's a valid question. I haven't, I haven't thought of it.
In other words, my question is, why not three? In other words, if you're being mandated that handicap spot, are you, is that what it boils down to?
Yes.
Okay, you're being mandated for that, but, so it's a business decision, do you want somebody tying up your pump if he's got a question, or does he go park someplace else?
Yeah, and again, there's kind of adequate space in and around the pumps for somebody, if they just had to even pull up over top of the fueling tank, or, you know, not necessarily blocking a pump itself. We kind of went back and forth on how many spaces to provide. There was, actually, some of your stores, I think, provide none, because you're basically sharing more of the parking with the supermarket. So we came kind of to the decision that this was the right number, but I understand your point as well.
Because it looks, because I can see it now, somebody saying, move your car, and then no place to move it to, okay? If you had a debate going on on this issue.
Any other questions from the board this time? Okay. Y'all pretty much done with your part?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open it up, public testimony then. I'm going to go by the sign and sheets first. What I'll do is I'll call you up, and then I'll ask you if you were sworn in, and then we'll take your testimony at this time. Please keep your, I'm breaking my timer out, keep it five minutes or less. Okay, first one on the list, Liz Pizzadelli. Elizabeth, I'm sorry. Did I get a chance to swear you in, dear?
He did.
Why don't you, there you go.
Hi.
Could you give us your name and address, please?
I'm Elizabeth Pizzadelli, and I live at 21057 Point Lookout Road. I am right next door, on the other side of Grandaddy Lane, to the proposed gas and go. I'm a mom of two children. One of the reasons I love living where I live is I can look out my dining room window and watch my kids play in the big field that we have. I can tell you, as a mom, I will not feel comfortable with my children playing next door to a gas station. I use my driveway to make a right every morning, to go to work and to take my daughter to It can be terrifying. The, sometimes the traffic is backed up to far past my driveway, and I'll be lucky enough that somebody lets me in. When the traffic's not backed up, the cars are going so quickly, it's very difficult for me just to make the right-hand turn. I will say that I don't, obviously, with a 24-year-old traffic study, the people that have moved into the hunting quarter have not been accounted for. I'd like to add that the daycare has expanded, that is behind that church next to the A&amp;W, so there's a ton of cars going in and out of there. There's no light there, it's very dangerous, and it's scary to drive each day. I'm also not sure why we even need another gas station, there are two, two within walking distance of the proposed one. And while I understand that Weiss would like that added incentive to their pocketbooks, I'm just wondering when the livelihood of the citizens come into consideration. I've never not been able to get a gas pump, ever, and those are the two gas stations I use most. So I think the very bottom line is, it's absolutely not needed. If Weiss wants to have an accompanying gas station, they could do what Harris Teeter did, and maybe develop it where there's already, you know, pavement, there's already built up, we're not going to use a green space that doesn't need to be built up. There are a lot of green spaces that are being built up in St. Mary's County, and I drive around and I see empty buildings all over the place, including in the Weiss Shopping Center. They have a very difficult time keeping businesses in that shopping center. Luckily, they have a good Mexican food place, and nobody in Callaway wants to drive very far, so I think that's why that's stated in business. We also have a liquor store, that has stated business clearly. Everything else, it's really been difficult to keep, there was a hair salon for a while, there was a pizza place. They don't get a ton of business, and so I would hate to build up a new gas station right next door to my house, and have it just become an ugly eyesore in the next 10 years, especially as America's moving towards electric vehicles. Thank you very much.
Okay, hold on a second, does anybody have any questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. Charlene Pizzadelli. Did I get a chance to swear you in? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Could you give us your name and address, please?
Oh, I live at 21025 Point Lookout Road.
Okay.
I am. Anyway, good evening, everyone. My name is Charlene Pizzadelli. I'm here tonight because of the proposed gas and go at Weiss in Callaway. Why on earth does anyone think putting another gas station in Callaway is anything other than a very, very bad idea? We have plenty of gas stations in and around Callaway. At the Callaway Village Center, we have two directly across the street from each other. I use both gas stations, depending on which way I'm going. I can usually pull right up to a pump without waiting. This tells me there is not a need for more stations, especially a station that is positioned as far back off the main road as this is. I own the land adjacent to the proposed gas station to the west side of Grandaddy Lane. The increased traffic will run parallel to my property from front to back, the full length. My grandchildren live in the house that is on the property. Their names are Violet and Max. They are one and 10 years old. The proposed gas station is directly across from their backyard. Violet and Max will no longer be able to safely play outside if that gas station is built. Violet and Max and the other children living near or in the Village Center, which I might say that right next to the gas station is a family with children, the following, the house on Grandaddy Lane right past that is a family with children. Anyway, they'll no longer be able to safely play outside if that gas station is built. Violet and Max and the other children living near or in the Village Center will be exposed to gas fumes, increased traffic, increased noise during the day and night, the potential for gas leaks, and contamination of their well water is another hazard. Increased runoff from the increase in asphalt paving will run directly into that backyard. Asphalt runoff is toxic, and don't tell me about the sediment ponds that Weiss only maintained once in 20 years. That was about a year ago. They took all the old shopping carts and the garbage and everything that had built up in those ponds and threw it in the woods. So they have not been good stewards of the environment, and there's no reason to think that they will suddenly decide to act differently. The children in the neighborhood catch the school bus at the end of Grandaddy Lane. They have to walk by the proposed gas station. I think that creates a danger. If it's built, the buffer of trees, which provides beauty and wildlife habitat, habitat will be gone, and instead, we will see an ugly gas station. This will adversely affect the value of my property and the surrounding properties. This gas station is a detriment to our neighborhood, it's not an asset. I got a copy of the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance. I wanted to try to understand the plan for the growth in the county, especially the Village Centers, because Callaway's designated as a Village Center. And by the way, my property is actually part of the Village Center. So it's my understanding that the comprehensive plan is written to improve and to continue to improve the way of life for the citizens of St. Mary's County. In the spirit and tone of the plan, it talks about preserving the rural nature of the county and making areas of growth beautiful. It also wants them to be pedestrian and bicycle-friendly and use renewable resources. It establishes Village Centers as mixed-use areas. The mixed-use areas are commercial and residential. If you're encouraging people to live there, walk around and bicycle, you must make it safe for them to do so. Increasing traffic by adding another gas station is not the way to do it. There's an abandoned gas station at Great Mills Road and Chancellor's Run. Weiss could build there, utilizing resources already available and correcting an area of blight. As more people switch to electric vehicles, gas stations will become less necessary. We need to look to the future. I question the need for any new gas stations in the county, especially in Callaway. We have plenty of empty retail spaces in the Callaway Village Center. I would like to see them utilized by businesses that improve and enhance our community. Another gas station does not meet that criteria.
Can you go ahead and wrap it up?
Okay.
I've been a little lenient with you.
All right. Well, thank you for listening, and I just want to say that I really am concerned about blight, and if that gas station goes under, I mean, it's going to, I think, affect my property values adversely once it's built, but if it goes under, it'll be even worse. So please reconsider whether that's what you want to do with that piece of property. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I have one question, excuse me, ma'am.
Wait a second, you get to come back up.
You mentioned people having to walk through that from your house.
They walk-
Why do they have to walk through, is the question?
On Grandaddy's lane, which is, if you-
Well, you got the picture on the wall.
Oh, okay, well, that's not, that's kind of not a really good- Well, that's not a, that's kind of not a really good, I guess it is. Okay, see that? That's Grandaddy Lane. Keep going with that pointer thing, go all the way around. Okay. The, the kids walk on Grandaddy Lane to catch the bus on Route Five, the school bus.
So they have to go all the way up to Route Five?
They have to go up to Route Five.
And there's no sidewalks on that road anyway, right?
No, I'm not concerned about that. I'm just concerned.
Well, I'm just saying they're walking, they're just going by on Route Five, on.
On Grandaddy Lane.
Okay.
Past the grass.
Okay, I just wanted to have it clarified.
Yeah, right now it's wood.
Because you gave the impression that they were actually walking through that and they're walking by it.
I didn't need to do that. But, but in the comprehensive plan, they do say that they want all those village centers to be.
I understand.
So, so they want people to be able to walk around.
Okay. Thank you.
Do I get to swear you in, ma'am?
Yes.
Thank you. Could you give us your name and address, please?
Name's Kathy Bennett. I'm, I live on four four five seven five Grandaddy's Lane. Just here to voice my objections at this point. I've been a long-term resident of Callaway on Grandaddy's Lane. That is our right of way to get out onto Route Five. It is our only way to get out onto Route Five. Route Five traffic is horrible. My husband's family, Beans, have been living, have lived there for several generations and we have a farm back there. From the information I've been able to gather, the gas and go site will directly abut Grandaddy's Lane. And I'd like to lay out why I don't like this. We currently put up with the noise of normal commerce from Weiss with the added light pollution from large parking lot in our rural area. We, in addition, we have, there's trash that collects from the, on our private road, from the grocery store. And one of our residents actually puts a garbage bag out at the end of our road so that people can drop their trash in there and she collects it herself. I personally regularly collect shopping carts from the end of my road and push them back to their cart corral on a regular basis. This is probably one to two a week. And if I didn't, they would collect for three, four weeks until somebody corralled them and put them over there. This is for my own good because I really don't want to run into one of those things on my way out of my road. But, you know, it's annoying. Adding a gas and go undoubtedly will add more trash, noise and light pollution. Those, they say they're going to leave a buffer. That green space is what keeps us from getting light all the way down my road. But they're not good stewards of the land. They haven't been yet and I'm not happy with it. The proposal removes a buffer and leaves our gravel road right of way vulnerable to further abuse by gas patrons. Individuals already confuse our private road as an alternative entrance to Weiss. They run in, they realize their mistake, they whip around on our gravel road, rut it, make holes in it and go back out again. This is regular. My husband spends a lot of time grooming that road with our equipment, our gravel, and I don't see any help going on there. Now granted, it's a nuisance and it's a nuisance that's going to get bigger. The current Route Five entrances to Weiss parking lot have had numerous bad accidents and is regularly very difficult to maneuver in and out of. The addition of gas and go will just worsen the traffic. I don't care what the counts are telling us right now. When the Callaway Village Center was proposed a lot of years ago, the idea was to have a centralized shopping and business center with open green spaces surrounding it to enhance the quality of life for the surrounding residents. The proposed gas and go eats a lot, a lot of the green space and rural character. And the proposal indicates the management would maintain the existing stormwater management pond and she was, Charlene had mentioned that. This pond is, is this pond large enough to handle the additional runoff? It goes directly from there to John's Creek and into the Saint Mary's River. So, you know, this is, this is a critical set of waterways. Only very recently, in the last year, had they even bothered to clean up the pond and it did have a lot of trees and reeds and trash in it. And we walk by it regularly. I can walk through those woods to go to the Weiss Shopping Center, you know, which is nice, but it's not, it's not clean. And how can they, are, are they going to continue to maintain it in that way? I hope not. The shopping center's management, its land stewardship has not been ideal. The grass does get mowed, however, when the building, the shopping center, they required to plant trees. Over half of those planted trees died the first two or three years. And they weren't replaced. Some of the spruces that were put in on beside Grandaddy's Lane were dug up and moved to the, I believe to the other end of the property because they lost more out there. I, you know, it was kind of a kerfuffle. And finally, there are two gas stations already that serve our area, in the immediate area, and just steps away from this new proposal. There's also a Sheets gas station two miles south on Five, a new 7-Eleven, three miles away if, as you drive there, and it's on Great Mills Road, and another gas station seven miles north of us. So it's right across from Lenartown High School. So when the 7-Eleven was proposed, one of the, I heard one of the objections to it was the, the one on Five and Two Forty-Nine, was the fact that it, there were also other existing businesses there and that there's a possibly a future decreased need for fuel stations because of the evolution of hybrids and EVs. And has that changed? We don't really need another gas station. And I just don't really want to see that coming in my community at this point. That's it. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Could you give us your name and address, please?
My name is Kaitlyn Bean and I live on four four five seven five Grandaddy's Lane. I'm the next generation. So this is going to affect the rest of my life. I am going to live there. I have yet to start a family, but if I do, this will affect them. And so I don't want a gas station. There's already the two. The proposed one is right in my lovely walking path to Weiss, where I buy ice cream and eat it on the way home after a long day of work. So the gas station is for Weiss's monetary benefit. It is not for my benefit. The road, the traffic plan to get into Grandaddy's Lane, as I'm coming south on Five, I pull off a good distance before the turn lane and start my tiki going. I have people coming up dangerously close behind me because they think I'm going to Weiss, but I'm not. The turn lane actually starts before Grandaddy's Lane and I'm turning there. And also with the shopping center off on the other side where the Rose Building is, the barbecue joint, you've got people turning left. So not only are people trying to whip around them right there where I'm trying to turn into Grandaddy's Lane, it's just a mess. And if people are, more people are turning in for the gas station, that will also affect me. And then coming north, yes, you may have put in a turn lane for Hunting Quarters, but there is no turn lane in for the, that shopping center of the barbecue joint and the Rose Building. And you have bikers that go up and down that road. I will slow down to let those bikers get to the shoulder before I even consider turning into Grandaddy's Lane. Because that is dangerous for them because once again, people are going to go around. We are a society of impatient people. So I don't even bother going out there to walk or ride my bike or anything because the traffic is crap. And so the gas station is just going 13 extra people or a person every hour or whatever the numbers were from 99. That's an extra person I have to deal with every time. And it is not, it is already stressful to get in and out of that road. I have also used the intersection between Weiss and Hunting Quarters. That is a pain to get out of because you never quite know if that right turn lane, if they are going to Two Forty-Nine or if they're coming into Weiss. Just depends on the traffic. So that is my opinion for, no, we really don't need one. So, all right.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe, I'm having a hard time reading your last name.
That was me. You can.
Oh, that's you?
I think so.
Well, I'm not going, you've had your chance. Had your shot.
I know it wouldn't be.
I'm sorry. Okay, that's the end of my list. Is there anybody else that wants to speak? You can come up to the microphone. If I haven't sworn you in, I will do so. Name, please?
Brenda Shalou.
Okay, hold on a second. I might have to get some help with that. Spell your last name for me, please. Okay. And give me your address and then I'll swear you in.
My address is four four eight nine four Mallard Place in Callaway.
Okay. Did I swear you in a little while ago?
No, we've gone here late.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you declare and affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony, responses and statements you may give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. So my name is Brenda Shalou. I live in Hunting Quarter. I'm one of the people that you all have been talking about. Specifically, I moved in in 1999 when the traffic study that you all were talking about was done. At that year, my husband and I moved into Mallard Place. We were the very first home in phase two of Hunting Quarter. Phase two was then built out, then came phase three. There are now 77 single-family homes. I think there were about 20 or so in phase one when we moved in. Our road from Hunting Quarter, Hunting Quarter Drive from Black Duck all the way to Mallard and Mallard were all dirt roads when we moved in. Widgeon was not cut, neither was Penn Tail, neither was Golden Eye. So those are all new additions since this traffic study was done. Exiting Hunting Quarter Drive, it is a one-lane road going out, one-lane road coming in. In the mornings, two days a week, I work up here in Lenartown and I go right. Three days a week, I go left because I go towards Solomon's over to Asbury. The traffic is horrendous. It has gotten worse year by year. There are days, sometimes I sit there and I count. I might be the third car, the fifth car, the seventh car. It depends how many people especially are trying to turn left in the morning. In the morning, if you are going out of there at 6:30 or 7 o'clock, the traffic is bad. However, the Weiss is closed until 7 o'clock. From seven to eight, it's not so bad because only a few people are at the store at that time. So the traffic has been a, a big, it's been a very bad situation. That intersection has a lot of accidents. Going south in the morning, there's a straight line of traffic coming south. What I tell my two teenagers, when they leave to go to Great Mills High School, they both, they drive there in the mornings. They have a new plan. What they do, they turn into the bank at the end of Hunting Quarter Drive. They go through the bank. They then make a right Hunting Quarter to go onto Five North, to make a left into the Weiss and then turn around and either exit on Piney Point Road or come back out because they can't make a left-hand turn out there safely. So that's one of my big concerns. We've seen so many accidents over the years. Also, there are two gas stations from the proposed plan. They are exactly 685 feet from where you are about to put another gas station. In addition, there was a Sunoco located down Piney Point Road that was 1.1 miles from the intersection of Piney Point Road and Five. Now that gas station was there for years, that Sunoco. And what happened when the Callaway Village Center was built and what is now the USA Fuels went in, that nice new gas station, the Sunoco closed. It is now known as the Beer Cave. Now, a little further down the road, under two miles from that Piney Point intersection, we have a Sheets. Another six miles up the road, we have a Sitco. I don't feel that there is a need to have in the Callaway Village Center what is being proposed as a fourth gas station. The 7-Eleven was, was approved by you all. So if that goes through and there was a delay with 7-Eleven, as we saw with the Great Mills 7-Eleven, that station was, it sat with no progress for over a year, but it was finally finished. So I would like someone to tell me if that 7-Eleven is going in because if it is, this will be the fourth gas station within 700 feet of each other. Lenartown does not have four gas stations. They have three on Route Five. Do we really need four gas stations, three of which are going to be directly across an intersection? What probably will happen is that one of them will close. I just think that this is poor planning on the part of the planning commission to allow this many gas stations in an area that is a major throughway going towards Lenartown. I mean, look at the base traffic. Look at Lenartown. You have two lanes in either direction. Lenartown and Route Five has built up. There are businesses all along on both sides. The intersection of Mocley Street was horrible. Look how long it's taking to fix Lenartown. Look at all of the businesses trying to widen, expand the intersections. Callaway is one lane essentially in either direction on Five. You have a couple little short turn lanes, but that's it. There are curbs, there are buildings close by. It's very congested. And I'm just afraid that the more you build, the more traffic that we will have. The number of businesses is going up. We need to widen, it's going to need to be widened. How long is that going to take? How many years has Lenartown taken to fix? Also, why are you making this a future problem in Callaway? Think about what you're doing. This is, this is going to impact us and their residents. There are 77 single-family homes that try to get out as well as townhomes back there in Hunting Quarter and an apartment complex. We have trouble getting out. Every single morning between four o'clock and six o'clock, it's the same way.
Could you wrap it up, ma'am, please?
Yes. And so we just like to request that you very seriously consider our request not to put a gas station in Callaway. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak?
Hello, my name is Saint Nick, but I might be a Saint prick tonight, but I'll.
All right, let, let's start all over. Let's start all over again. You give me your name, okay?
Yeah. I'm Richard Hayden. I'm one nine four nine five Woodbury Way, Lenartown. I was part of the 99 when they put the moratorium on Callaway. And back then, we had the Callaway Committee come out of that and we thought we had a prospect of making that a beautiful area. But since then, it just seemed like it's gone downhill. My property adjoins to the back of this project. I have a right of way that goes through Grandaddy Lane. And at some point, the store we're in, we're under management right now. I have to go around that to get to my right of way to Grandaddy Lane. So I was hoping maybe that would be addressed before this meeting tonight. But if there's a 300-foot setback from the highway, I'm afraid it won't be. And besides that, we don't have a medium in that highway on a, you know, when the state came in, put four lanes in. It's just, should have been a median there. Maybe all of this would have worked with the median there. And the gentleman here was right about that study. It was, it was, you know, and I think they have good intentions with the 300-foot setback. I, I think that's part of what they, the setback would entertain here. I have, I mean, it's a great store. The pharmacist is great. I love the place, but I just think that the, the gas station problem here is something we don't need an eyesore over. We need to have a conclusion as. We need to have a conclusion as is the Seven-Eleven gonna happen or is it not gonna happen? At that point, we can make a decision to see where we're gonna put everything at. But right now, it's just hurting the people in the Hunting Quarters to come out of their property. So they're right across the road from that. Maybe that... Like I said, maybe if there was a median there, that would've changed all this. But right now, we gotta work with what we got.
Before you leave, I made a major faux pas there. Did I swear you in? Did you get sworn in?
No.
All right. Where's Mr... Mr. Hauser at? I made a major mistake, Mr. Hauser, and did not swear him in. I was writing his name down and thinking of Saint Nick and a whole lot of other stuff.
We swear retroactively and maybe omit that part.
That's why I like you, John Hauser. You're the man. So if you would raise your right hand so I can just swear you in that everything you just said is... Do you declare and affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony, responses, and statements that you have already given will be the... Are the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, it is.
I do appreciate that. That was my... My wrong. You got me with the Saint Nick part.
That's all I had to say.
I was flustered. Anybody have any questions?
Uh, can he get me a boat for Christmas?
Pay no attention. Pay no attention. He hasn't been good enough to get a thing, so...
Thank you, Santa. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Gotta have a little levity. Is there anybody else? Yes, sir. Or ma'am? I won't forget this time, that's for sure. Let me get your name and address first.
I'm Katie Ponce, four-four-seven-seven-nine Grand Eddie Lane, Callaway. I know my dad signed his name on it.
What was your last name again?
Ponce, P-O-N-C-E.
Okay. Raise your right hand, please. Do you declare and affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony, responses, and statements that you may give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, ma'am. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, we don't agree with the new gas station. Our main concern is, um, the kids. We have three kids at home, a high schooler, a middle schooler, and, uh, the little one is in fourth grade. They walk to the bus stop every day, which is on, um, Route Five. So the gas station will be right there next to it. We don't feel that it's safe for them. They do play outside all the time. We don't need that kind of exposure for them. Um, we... I do agree with all the statements they gave about the poor planning, the disruption it will make, that we don't need another gas station. I think that's it. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir. Can I get your name and address, please?
First name is Thomas. Last name is C-H-A-I-L-L-O-U.
And address?
Street address is four-four-eight-nine-four Mallard Place, Callaway, Maryland.
Okay. Raise your right hand, please. Do you declare and affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony, responses, and statements you may give will be the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
My wife and I moved into Hunting Quarter in nineteen ninety-nine. So same time this traffic study was done. At that time, as my wife stated, there were approximately twenty houses in our neighborhood. About half of the townhomes that are there now were built. The apartment complex that is there was built. Since we moved in, an additional fifty to fifty-five homes were built in Hunting Quarter. The hunting... The neighborhood is now fully built out. I normally leave for work in the morning at about six-fifteen. If I'm five minutes late, it is not uncommon for me to sit at the entrance of my subdivision for seven to ten minutes waiting to get out onto Route Five. The quickest way for me to get out is to do what many of my neighbors have started doing and to cut into the old bank, go north on Route Five towards Lenartown, and then turn into a Weiss just to make it out of my neighborhood, just to make it to work on time. That is what we instruct my kids to do when they drive. I have an eighteen-year-old and a sixteen-year-old. I don't let them turn left out of our neighborhood because it's not safe in the morning or the evening. The... From the entrance of the Weiss markets on Route Five now, there are two gas stations within seven-hundred feet. Another three-hundred feet beyond that is a proposed and approved Seven-Eleven. A mile and a half... I'm sorry, one-point-six miles from the entrance of the Weiss going towards Great Mills is a Sheets. Less than six miles towards Lenartown, there's another gas station at Lenartown High School or across from Lenartown High School. Do we really need another gas station in Callaway? Do we need four gas stations within seven-hundred feet of each other? Is there any place else in Saint Mary's County where there's four gas stations within seven-hundred feet of each other? I find that hard to believe. We don't need to be the nexus of gas stations in Callaway. Traffic there is bad enough. And trying to base that no additional work is needed on that road on a twenty-five-year-old traffic study is completely ridiculous. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Thanks, sir. Is anybody else? Get one... You only got one try.
I have a letter from my maker. I'm wondering if I could just read that. It's pretty short.
Mr. Hauser? Hold on one second.
Submit it.
Mr. Chairman, as I've said before, you have broad discretion over how to handle public hearing. But I think at a minimum, you could accept the letter into the...
This letter was not forwarded to Land Use and Growth Management with the... Along with all the other letters that we got?
She just found out about it, so it was too late to submit it. So she gave it to me.
So I'd say at a minimum, you could accept the letter into the record, and it could be added to board docs along with all the others at a minimum. So what's how you could handle it tonight?
I'm... Yeah. Come on up. Don't stray from that letter, though. Don't you stray. Don't put me in a bad spot now.
This is from...
Pull your mic... Pull your... Pull your microphone down there.
This is from Mary Hall, four-four-seven-three-five Grand Daddy Lane. I, Mary Hall, am a proud resident of Callaway, Maryland. At the age of seventy-seven, I've called this community my home for many years, cherishing its tranquility, safety, and the close-knit nature of our neighborhood. I am writing to urgently express my deep concerns regarding the construction of Wise Gas and Go on Point Lookout Road, Callaway, Maryland. Several compelling factors necessitate careful reconsideration of this project, each of which presents significant risks to our community. First and foremost, it's alarming that the proposed gas station would be the third within a half-mile radius and a third within a five-mile radius. This level of saturation raises serious concerns about the impact on our neighborhood. The density of gas stations in such proximity could lead to congestion and a higher likelihood of accidents, especially on Point Lookout Road, which is currently a two-lane road. The additional traffic generated by this gas station could further strain the road infrastructure, creating a hazardous situation for residents and commuters alike. Moreover, research emphasizes the relationship between convenience store gas station locations and crime rates. Convenience store holds up... Holdups account for about six percent of all robberies nationwide, making employees vulnerable to workplace violence. The potential increase in crime due to the presence of another gas station in our community is deeply concerning. Additionally, there is a worry that the crime rate in Callaway will escalate if another gas station is introduced, compounding the adverse effects on neighboring areas. Furthermore, I would like to draw your attention to the specific criteria outlined in the study from the Community and Environmental Defense Services for an ideal convenience store gas station location. It is essential that any development adheres to these guidelines, ensuring a minimum distance from homes and schools, avoiding visibility from historic resources, and promoting accessibility by foot, bike, and cars. These criteria are crucial for preserving public health, promoting community safety, and preventing negative impacts on our neighborhood. In light of these compelling concerns and the evidence presented, I implore you to reconsider the proposed gas station's location and its potential implications for our community. It is vital to prioritize the safety, well-being, and overall quality of life for the residents of this neighborhood. Respectfully, Mary J. Hall.
Could you give that letter to Ms. Blasko, please? Thank you, ma'am. Anybody have... Well, there are nobody to ask questions. Thank you. Is there anybody else? All right. I'm gonna go ahead and close public testimony at this time. We'll take a five-minute recess, and then we'll start on Reba, okay? Five minutes. Five minutes.
Do you know how many times I've seen those jobs in my life?
Yep.
Okay, if everybody wants to be seated, we'll go ahead and get back in session. Okay. Public testimony is done. Well, we're back to rebuttal from the applicant, along with any questions that might come up within that.
Sure, I'll try to keep this brief and we'll hit on a couple of key points, I guess. There's a lot of testimony. Well, first of all, I'd just like to say that this is a permitted use, fuel sales is a permitted use in the VMX zoning district. We're not requesting any variances or special exceptions, except for reduction in the number of parking spaces required, which in our minds is really being a little bit more environmental-friendly than, you know, additional asphalt that's not gonna be used. So, just like to make that point. There's a lot of discussion about environmental concerns, gas fumes, gas spills, increased runoff. I believe I directed answer those questions earlier in testimony, but I'll just say that, again, as far as gas spills, there's leak detection and leak prevention in the tanks. Again, we have a trench drain around the fuel area that's collected, sent through an oil grit, oil-water separator before it even leaves, then back through the buyer-retention areas and to the existing stormwater management facility. So, we have redundant controls in place to prevent any spills leaving the site. As far as stormwater management, the site will be, is and will be designed in accordance with the current regulations. So, we're providing environmental site design for treating water quality from impervious surfaces, and any, there will be no increase in the 10-year runoff through the pond. So, all that will be reviewed and approved by Department of Public Works and Transportation in accordance with all the regulations. There was some discussion about trash, shopping carts. I will say that Weiss has now been on board at the center since you said 2000--
2016.
2016. I don't have him with me, but there are reports that this swim facility was inspected, I think, on a triannual basis. And with Weiss owning this particular lot, I feel confident in saying that there'll be better care taken for any trash, and I'm glad that the point's been made that, you know, it's just something that we weren't aware of at this time. So, I appreciate that testimony. I think that's really about all that I have. Mike, if you would just kinda wanna opine on the traffic.
Yes, again, for the record, Michael Lenhart. There were a few people that testified that the original traffic study was conducted before Hunting Quarter was built out, and that is correct. But the traffic impact study specifically noted that, that Hunting Quarter was approved at that time and not yet built out, and it did add in the traffic for the units that hadn't been built at that time. So, it was accounted for in the traffic impact study for the full build-out of Hunting Quarter. I would, I would just like to reiterate again, this is a low-traffic generator that by itself wouldn't require a traffic impact study. The, however, it does have a traffic impact study, albeit an older one. The zoning ordinance is very specific. We talked a little bit about traffic counts that the state highway has. The zoning ordinance, the adequate public facilities requirements are very specific about the level of service analysis and methodology that's required. It's called the critical lane volume method, and it looks at intersections specific, and it calculates the level of service. That's what the state highway uses in their analysis, and so the recent state highway counts or those intersection counts, that it doesn't take into consideration. And there may be days where there's an accident, there may be days where the signal timing gets messed up, there, you know, could be people bailing out from another route to try to get around an accident at another location and to cause them issues. But we do have a number of state highway counts that indicate that those intersections do pass the requirements of the zoning ordinance. And so, with that, I would, I would rest unless you have any questions.
Okay. Anybody else? Well, they'll open it up to the board for--
Well, can I have one question? That he was talking about the trash and the input that from the public. From the public's perspective, who do they go to if they have questions about that? The store manager at Weiss?
I'm sorry, if there's a question about the stormwater, the storm--
No, no. When you were, there was a lot of probably comments about trash, and you all said you'd clean it up or you're on a triannual basis for inspection. In the meantime, is there any point of contact that the public should go to if there are questions or issues that be popping up? Is that the store manager?
They should originally, yeah, initially contact our store manager and--
Okay, I just wanna let, get it on record for the public as to who to go to, okay?
Yeah, and, and understand that she will, she will pass it on to, to our offices, and we will address it.
All right. Excuse me, Chair.
Sorry, one point I forgot to mention I had written down here is that Land Use and Growth Management is looking into the status of the 7-Eleven project that has been discussed quite a bit. It appears it was approved in August 2020. So, with a two-year approval and a concept, it would have expired in August of 2022. What we're unsure about, and we need, research needs to be done, is if an extension was submitted and/or granted. So, can't say for sure at this time, but just kinda wanted to throw that into the record.
Property's posted for sale. So, I mean, I reached out and, you know, nobody owned nothing. So, that wasn't, that wasn't helpful.
Gotcha. Thank you, sir.
So, I mean, if you're going to, well, it doesn't matter. Concept has expired, unless, unless they have a, an extension, I guess.
Correct.
So. So. First of all, and most of this is probably for the public. The decision by Weiss or anybody else in this, in the county that wants to come and do business here, it's a business decision for them. This board, we don't have the ability to pick and choose. I, and I'm a, a person that has changed jobs 30 times in my life in St. Mary's County because the county always wanted more. They wanted more of this, more of that, and every time somebody came, they took a little piece of me. And so, I moved on to doing other things. I'm not, I, I don't disagree with you. I mean, I think there are too many gas stations in Callaway, or will be too many. There are too many now, you know, even the proposed one. I don't know that, and I don't believe that they're sustainable. I just don't. And I've been a businessman for, let's see, 55 years, a while. So, with regard to the green space, and people, when I say this, people, it really falls really hard on people's ears. If you're driving down the, the road and you see an oak tree, and you've always seen that oak tree, and it's, and you love it, it's beautiful, it's, it's always been there. And then someone, one morning, stands next to it with a chainsaw, and now you're upset. The reality of it is, it's not your tree, it's their tree. Granddaddy Lane, those are, it's all your property back there. You do with it as you will, as you want, provided you get proper, you know, licenses and, and all the rest of that. But we don't, we don't own the view. I wish we did, but we don't. So, Richard's gone. This is a copy of a, a master plan that was written in 2001. It's 80 pages long. It is extremely well-written by a lot of really smart people. The problem is that one of those smart people decided that they didn't want to adopt it and threatened a moratorium for building in St. Mary's. This document would have addressed the replication of all sorts of things, gas stations, schools, all the rest of that. But we don't have that. We don't, we don't have the ability to say you can't build it there. And let, well, we do, I mean, if it's not, you know, allowed in the, you know, in the comprehensive plan, it's not zoned properly, we can do that. But small-area master plans, we've named village centers everywhere and haven't done a single master plan on any of them. 80 pages long. This is a follow-up that was done by another group, same year, 2001. Far more restrictive. We have village centers and town centers and development districts for a reason. That's where we want things to happen. This document wants three dwellings and one acre. That's not reasonable in the village center, or a town center, or, you know, or a development district. It just isn't. But I will, but I will say this. I'm, I'm being, say I was uncomfortable with the 24-year traffic study, I would be lying if I wasn't that. And so, moving forward, I believe that you, you folks are gonna have to come up with another traffic study. I'm not clear about what the numbers are that the state generated and why they generated those numbers downstream. I go there at least three times a week, and depending on the, the time of day, certainly, morning, evening, is really difficult. It's really difficult. And I understand you're not, you're not gonna add that many trips. But again, I can't get past a document for, that's 24-years-old, and I don't guess more importantly, you know, I'm not really crazy about things surviving 30 years, as though nothing's changed. And Lord knows, everything has changed along that way. So, I'm not saying that you don't have a right to do something there, whatever it is within, within the confines of the zoning and the comprehensive plan. My, my opinion, there, those stations, all those stations are not sustainable. And I don't know what happens with 7-Eleven, maybe nothing. I mean, I don't know. But the folks are right. Four stations within 100 yards of one another is, is sort of a bit much, is a bit much. And I understand that it's part of, you know, what Weiss is doing. I mean, I, I get that. I mean, you know, people will get a certain amount of credit for shopping, get their gas, I mean, every, a lot of people are doing it. But it's hard living in a place like Callaway. When I, when I was born in this county, you could have fired a cannon and nobody would hurt it. Things have changed, and that's just the way it is. I mean, you know, I wish it, I wish it, it doesn't look the way it does, and I'm some responsibility for it looking the way it does, having been here for a while. I don't have to like it, but I have to work within the confines of the rules and regulations that I have to work within the confines of. And so, for us, we have, I believe, the right to ask for a traffic study, and I think that we should, I think you guys should consider doing that.
Anybody else have anything?
Go ahead.
I'm just gonna work way down the line.
I agree with Merrell. 24-year-old traffic study, I can't move forward without getting some new information. Capitalism is one of the best things we have going for us in this country. And if there's three gas stations, one, four, you come in, you become Pac-Man, the rest of them go out, so now you no longer have four gas stations there. And I understand why you're doing it, it's your bottom dollar, it's a business decision, and you're zoned for that. But a 24-year-old traffic study, a lot has changed. I made the mistake and went in to dash in and sit there, and I timed it 15 minutes, and I had to go to Great Mills, and I didn't know how to get out of there other than swim upstream. There was no right turn lane over there by that church to get me to even go back up. I had to sit, and it was courtesy of the people in the other lane to come, say, "Come on out." "No, you can't do that." So, anyway, the 24-year-old study, you, you gotta update that and then convince me that we're making the right decision. To me, it's health and safety in that area. So, I would like to see an updated traffic study. And I would also like to know what's going on with the state of Maryland from 249 all the way to Great Mills Road. If you say that the state is doing surveys, is that the correct Great Mills or exactly what? That's another area that I don't, I don't feel comfortable not knowing what the state's doing down that way. I know it is a nice, beautiful, new church, increasing the school capacity, and I've served on the board and approved both of those, and they had traffic studies. So, that's my opinion.
Just a real quick thing for the public mostly, and I know Mr. Evans touched on it, but the number of businesses in a confined area, whether it's, you know, within 500 feet, 200 feet, there could be 10 lots there, all zoned the same. If 10 people wanted to put gas stations there and they met all the requirements, you'd have 10 gas stations, 'cause it's not under our purview to say no because there's another gas station there, unfortunately. I know some jurisdictions, like Lenartown, I think they do that. They would, they have the right under, under their bylaws to say, "Well, we've got two here, we're not want another one," but the county, the rest of the county doesn't, doesn't do that. So, I just wanted to make sure that the public knows that, I know that's, was a sticking point for most people who spoke, but it's not, it's not, wouldn't be part of our, of our consideration either way that we, that we went. So, that's all I wanted to say.
Yeah, I just had a few comments. Number one, I too am concerned about the safety, sorry. I too am concerned about the safety for the residents that live parallel to Weiss. And I also was reading some of the comments over the weekend from the individuals, and there was a statement in there about the farm equipment, and when they have to go out, you know, those, that farm equipment's pretty large. So, there's a safety issue there. Because if they're gonna use that road for the gas station, and you've got farmers coming in and out of that road, that could be--
Well, they have, we have--
--precept for disaster.
We have that right to farm, farming ordinance.
We sure do.
And so, that hopefully takes care of a great deal of that.
Well--
Because people have to accommodate the farm equipment. Drivers, yeah.
That, that driveway, though, isn't gonna be used for the gas station, Granddaddy Way.
Well, you heard what they said about the folks now, even today, think that road is an entrance to Weiss. What makes you think that's gonna stop too? I'm not.
No, I'm--
Anyway, that just caught my attention. I also agree with the two of you in that the traffic study, that's unacceptable to me to, to base anything on a 1999. I mean, I go by there at least five times a week, and it is exactly the way they described it. So, I think that's a, it, this gas station's not gonna make it worse. It's already to the point where we better think about something to do to fix that problem for those residents. Not me, but-- Yeah, those are my concerns.
I think it's critical for us to listen to the issues, concerns, and points brought forward by the community this evening, because these are the people that are living this day in and day out. And regardless of the traffic counts from April, the bottom line is, we hear over and over from the community that safety is a significant issue. And as a parent of children at one point who did drive to school, it's very frightening in the fact that kids have to go in the opposite direction to turn around to get out on the highway so that they can get to school and people can get to work. It's just, it's just not acceptable, and it's not the way that people should have to live their lives. And I think it's, you know, a traffic study from 24 years ago, just from, from my perspective, from where I live, would be completely unacceptable. It is completely changed. And again, you know, I, I heard what Mr. Lenhart said in terms of, you know, what was, what they recorded in April, but, you know, what time of day is it? You know, it's a blip. These people live this every day, and we, we cannot ignore that. These people live this every day, and we, we cannot ignore that. So I, I agree with everything everyone has said here this evening, and that a traffic study is, is warranted if we are to, to look at, at this at some point in the future.
I guess it's my turn. I look at it from the standpoint of we're at, the question is adding six gas pumps. I don't see where that, and, and it's limited access to those pumps coming from the Weiss parking lot. All the other issues are really, as Mr. Evans described, in the fact that the county did not follow through 15 years ago with what a town center will be and will not be. But you're in here trying to make a buck. You, you're following the rules of the county. You're just trying to put in six pumps. Granted, the traffic study is 20 years old and needs to be updated, but to hold it up, hold six pumps up for a traffic study, I think is crazy. And it's putting the onus on the wrong people. I think it's, it's the whole area that's been allowed to develop in sort of a hodgepodge way. And as everybody's explained it, this board does not have that control. So if you want 20, 25 gas pumps, that's the way it's gonna be. Even though I, I think there's a little hope here that the 7/11, when I hear it was, I didn't realize that three years have slipped by so fast since I sat on that board that approved it on that corner, that, that appears that despite, well, maybe there were some extensions, but it would be gone. Certainly a trade-off for, for the Mammoth 7/11 24/7 approach to six pumps operated with store hours, I think is a, a good trade-off considering, okay? And I don't know that, you know, the other gases are on the other side of the road, and when you're at Weiss, think about trying to get across to those gas pumps. So hey, I look at, the issue before us is approving the extension of the six gas pumps. And at 33 visits, is that the way I interpreted it right, a day? At $20, at 20 gallons of fill-up, I questioned whether or not you're gonna make any money on just building it, other than have a, have a loss, leader loss type operation there with your gas, okay? But anyway, that's your world, not mine. But enough said. Back to you, Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I make one more comment before you do?
Sure.
I think the overall big picture that we're not looking at, we're looking at just the village center that's affecting this. Great Mills Road now is a DoD hub. Those defense contractors were not there years ago. I don't really know how that affects. I know there's a lot of traffic that diverts instead of going 235. Will now use that to go and circumvent, to get around, to get to Great Mills Road instead of coming down. They'll take the extra time and cut off St. Andrew Church Road. They'll also do the other cut across and then funnel down through there. That's the reason I'm asking for a traffic study. Hunting Quarters, yes, that was very well explained, that, that was in the equation of the number of trips when it was approved. You did an excellent job with your store. But there's other surrounding factors that are in play that I think you have to look upstream to find out where the dam is or where it's getting ready to bust. And so I think that you better be looking at Great Mills Road and the people trying to get to Great Mills Road, and they're gonna come through Callaway. Your six pumps, I don't think it's gonna make any difference other than your bottom line, and it's probably a lost leader. I don't know. But that's a business decision for you. I'm just looking at future as to what would cause that if nothing has quote-unquote "changed" in that area. I say that Great Mills Road with the DoD contractors, if you go down that road and look, you'll see DoD contractors every other block or two. And that's something that wasn't there before, before it was an automotive, before it was tail of gas, tail of gas on the other side, now you got DoD contractor. I'm just saying, we need to have that information before I can make a decision. And I think Great Mills Road is the one making that decision.
First off, I'll say, I like your store. It's very convenient, you know, very, as I say, I go back and forth to Ponty Point a whole lot more than I really enjoy doing. So I have a great job in case my boss is watching. I, I like my job, so. But my big problem this evening is safety. Couple of the things that were brought up by the neighbors here that I was surprised didn't come up when we went to do a 7/11 up toward Lenartown, that was turned down at the time. One of the big things was neighbors that were worried about that have children next door, and they, they had actually offered up a fence that went around that lot that kept people that might walk over there. As you say, we, we were asked to have an extra parking spot in case somebody had questions or something. Keep people from wandering, you know, keep them channeled towards your store. That would possibly help the neighbors next door. Doesn't have to be an ugly fence. It can be different types of fence. Doesn't have to be a white, big white, I'll say hurricane-type fence, but it could be, there's, there's different fences in the county. I'll say around the Kohl's Shopping Center, that is more than adequate to keep people from crossing over into neighboring property, to help protect them, along with the right buffering that would keep any light, even though you have downward light, you have cars that are gonna be coming in and out of there with headlights that go around. So if you had, if you were to do the proper plannings, indoor screening, indoor fencing that goes around there, wouldn't bother the neighbors, you know, and then they could feel better about if those people have one way in and one way out, and it's toward the store, it's not toward them. They won't have to worry about, you know, I don't know if you're gonna keep, you say your store's open until 10 o'clock at night. It was dark when I got here tonight. So that's, that's six hours of people wheeling around that parking lot and then shining their lights around. Back when this traffic impact study was done, that were, that was brought up, we didn't have a church, we didn't have a school, we didn't have a veterinarian, and we didn't have a dollar store that was very close by. They, they're going through there to get to those too. So it, it, it's just an addition to what goes on, listening to the neighbors. I go through there at all different times a day, because I'm always running out and doing things from Ponty Point. I've seen traffic, especially in the Hunting Quarter, I feel bad for them. It, it, it's a bad spot right there. And it just happens to be right across from the entrance of your, of your shopping center that you've stated is not quite built out, could be built out more. Hasn't been looked into, but could be. You stated, you know, you had the permission. So I would feel much more comfortable with the traffic impact study. I don't think it's holding anything up. Even if you got permission tonight, it's not gonna hold you up that long if you had to get that traffic impact study. Everything in this county that happens, happens in months, sometimes years. It doesn't happen in days, and it doesn't happen in weeks. It's not gonna hold you up. It's not gonna keep anybody from going there, getting lunch at your store, or whatever, whatever else might happen. But I think those might be some additions that if you could get that study, look into those safety fi- safety's a big thing. You got pe- the, you're in a, you're in a town center or village center there, but you also have neighbors. You have neighbors that have children, that, that road that goes back there. I know that Bean Farm Lane, the Granddaddy Lane from a long, long time ago, that family's been there for years. The Coombs Farm right up the street, you know, you have people that, that, that live right there, that, that have to put up with that. And that traffic impact study, I want, I'd like to hear about the turn lanes and stuff, because like I say, that, that, that turn lane, that's, if you're heading south on 5, that gets into 249, is a launching zone. I don't know if you can do anything. I know when we were doing aldees up in Charlotte Hall, and they have somewhat of the same problem with, I'll say, the turn lane on the side. It was bought by that developer, if I'm not mistaken, and if I am, one of y'all over there, raise your hand and cut me off. But he was gonna put up, I'll say, as an entryway directional to turn into there. So otherwise, I can't fly right down that right-hand lane all the way to 249. I'm gonna have to get down to almost that service station before I can get ready to turn onto 249. I don't get to use it as a whole launching site, because what a lot of people do is in your second entrance to Weiss, that's, I'll say, in the middle, they'll take that and then come out the back way and get on 249. They don't, they don't wanna mess with the light or, or having a yield or anything like that. They're, they're gonna bust on through there, see it all the time, you know? It's just, I think that should be looked into in that traffic impact study, Mr. Minehart, if you could. Just a few other things. I'm not begrudging you. You have a right to do things, but you have a right to be safe in the neighborhood too. That's my, that's my greatest concern. What say you?
Certainly, we discussed it. We believe this board has the right to ask for traffic studies. We're not gonna debate that. I would say, I think we need to be careful when you have subdivisions that have approved studies based on traffic, you know, a certain number of trips that were approved at that time, whether it was 20 years ago or five years ago. Because I think you have many subdivisions, you know, in the county that are operating on that route and building out to that point based on improvements that were put in however many years ago. So I, I'm not gonna speak to the legality of it. I just think
They're not in the hottest corner in Callaway, though. That, that, that's a hot, that's a hot spot.
But, you know, it's kinda, you can't pick and choose, right? I mean, I think we, you know, we gotta make sure that we're
When it comes to safety, I think we have a right to pick and choose.
And, and again, I'm not certainly debating whether we need to do a traffic study or not, so I think that's
And of those that you're talking about, if they've been around for a while, once this discussion starts about how old they are, that sort of stuff, typically, the developer will simply proffer it.
I'm sorry?
They will simply proffer a traffic study.
Right. No, no, no. And again, I, I just, I preface that by saying, we're arguing that point, you know? You know, I guess the, the question becomes what the traffic study tells us, and we can kinda determine at that point, kind of how we have to move forward.
Yeah, and, and I guess, I'm looking at this one piece, when, when you see in, in zoning and comprehensive plan where things are required, as opposed to where things, where things are required, in other pieces, places, it's will and shall. People use these things sort of interchangeably, and depending on who's talking about them, they mean different things. But in this case, the traffic study at that point also will talk, will, will speak to the, the level of service at 249 and 5. And that would be, that will erase, hopefully, this big red paragraph that's in front of me.
Gotcha.
Okay?
Mr. Howser, you know you weren't gonna get by without me asking you a question at the end of the night. Does this board have the right to ask for a traffic impact study?
It's a bit of a nicety. You've got the right to ask for it. What I can't find in the comprehensive zoning ordinance is the right to require it. So if Mr. Kajewski wanted to, on behalf of his clients, acknowledge that you're asking for it, but say, "We choose not to do it," I think they got the right to do it. The planning commission would then just have to decide whether they've got the information in hand tonight to go forward with a vote where they think they can show that this project establishes that they've met any traffic APF requirements and goes to the public safety and welfare. So the applicants just have a decision whether or not they wanna make that decision, a choice or kinda all make that proffer and do the traffic impact study, which seemed to be what they said.
Am I allowed to ask this board for a straw poll to see if they want a traffic impact study?
I believe you would. You could do that. I think comments have made it fairly clear where a majority of the board's planning commission stands right now. And again, applicant may just at this point be willing to go with it. You've asked traffic studies of applicants in the past, and we have a good history in this county of working with developers to require information like this, and them coming forward to the planning commission when that's asked of them, even if it might be above and beyond the minimum requirements.
So I know a lot of times when we get that, I'll say, extra information, a lot of times it goes through, very few times when it doesn't. Mr. Minehart can tell you that. He's been around, we both had dark hair at the time, so it's been, it's been a while.
Quick, quick question for
John? Mr. Howser.
Mr. Howser, sorry. If we get a traffic impact study with new information, will we have to have, I mean, I'm sure something's gonna be different. I mean, common sense would say something is gonna not look the same as it did 24 years ago, not that we even seen that for, from 24 years ago. Will we have to have another public hearing, or?
So if you continue, if you continue it tonight, you would not need to have another public hearing. Continue the deliberations to then get the receipt of that additional information. It wouldn't be necessary to open it up for public comment. The only other thing I'll add right now, that if we do continue, it's something that'll have to be looked into. I know Mr. Lenhart at the beginning said that he thought that the improvements that were done based on a much larger shopping center than what's been constructed today effectively make the APF findings of 25 years ago kind of vested, and that we can't do anything about it today. I can't agree with that right now, based on what I got in front of me. I don't wanna totally rule out that opinion, but vested rights can be abandoned over time. Certainly, a great amount of time has lapsed right now. And fact is, what's being proposed tonight is not what was part of that initial concept site plan. I get the argument that overall, it's less square footage and it's a different use, but all those kind of things right now militate towards me, that I can't really tease out a vested rights argument. I think we withstand scrutiny right this moment. Now, again, there are other things that go into that. If somehow that concept site plan has been extended for 25 years, seems unlikely, but it's not impossible, that might change things. It also depends on the nature of what mitigation agreements, if any, were made back then, and what sort of binding effect they'd have today. So I don't wanna rule it out completely, but I don't think it's a given that you are not allowed, or we can't expect the applicant to abide by current APF standards today for this concept site plan.
Mr. Lenhart, if you were to do a traffic impact study, would you include in that a simulation of, of stacking in the traffic, how the traffic flows?
We could. I mean, the, the zoning ordinance requires the use of the critical lane volume for determination of adequacy, and that's what I would base the determination of adequacy on. You know, we could do some queuing analysis as well.
I'm gonna ask the board, do y'all want to, to continue this in, in order to get a, I'll say, a, a up-to-date traffic impact study? Just raise your hand, like it's just a piece of straw, okay?
I, 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 I guess I'm the one to center here. I think that the issue here is six pumps and nothing more. Traffic study has been pointed out by Mr. Evans and Tony.
Okay, well, I'm
Much broader, and we're trying to put it on one guy who wants one small project.
I asked a question
I think it's wrong.
That's not my own issue.
I asked a question, and I just need an answer, is do we, do we want a traffic impact study? Do I have a show, can I have a show of hands of people that want a traffic impact study?
Paying for it.
Well, they are.
The applicant pays for it, John.
Vote no.
Well, then you, you can vote no, John. That's, that's, you know, that's why we're seven people up here. You can vote the way you want. And there were other things that, that came up that would
Is there, is there a way to get specific conditions tonight that we need to address? I mean, so if we do come back with a traffic study, that would be, you know, sufficient for the board? I mean, you talked about some screening and/or fencing around
I'd like
Granddaddy Lane. Is there, that's the one item?
Well, you don't have to do the whole lane, but I'd like it so that people can't walk off that lot, you know?
Where we're developing, yeah. Along, along the area we're developing.
You're developing, sure.
That's what I picked up on, that was the one additional comment.
That way, you know, the, the kids can walk up there and it's, it's a different day.
Yeah.
So if, if you
Are there any other specific items?
Just, just, I'm sorry, go ahead. Two more things, Howard. I would think, hopefully, I don't know whether it's Mr. Howser or county staff could find out if there's still a file of what was proposed, mitigated, you know, as far as, like you said, you can't, you don't feel comfortable saying if, if it's, this is vested. We'd like to know that. And I think we would also like clarification of whether the 7/11 submitted a extension. So, and that's the only thing I can think of. So, and that's the only thing I can think of in addition to the, like you said, you mentioned some kind of fencing and the traffic updated.
One more thing, is there any way that we can, could you put a privacy sign or is there something we can do or propose to help avoid or stop people from going into that road?
On Grand Daddy?
On Grand Daddy. I don't know.
Be up to the applicant. I think they own that, I think, don't you? That's part of your property, Grand Daddy is your property?
That's correct.
Yeah.
They have a right of way through it?
Yeah, they just have a right of-
If y'all could possibly put a sign up, Not, Not A Through Road, private entrance.
Something to prevent-
Homeowner entrance, only something, you know, something that worked, worked for you.
Mr. Evans?
Just one comment about, with regard, what you said, with regard to a buffer, fence, whatever. Weiss, when Weissbury did that building, they did a very nice job. I mean, it's appropriate for a village center. It looks good. It's much like, I'll get in trouble if this, Royal Farms does a good job as well. That said, there are some, some, some times where we have folks that proffer some sort of a fence or something. We wind up with a six or an eight-foot bright white fence, which looks terrible, and it's really not in keeping with the community. It's not in keeping with what Weiss looks like. You've referenced the fencing around Kohl's and Dick's. That's probably the best mitigated, mitigation that we ever came up with. Originally, it was a-
Fence.
It was a fence. And I drove by and called Bob Bowles and said, please tell them to stop. This is terrible. And they're going to save a lot of money if they do it differently. And they came back with a much nicer four-foot little, you know, just very attractive. And I don't know that the people that live on Grand Daddy necessarily want to walk down that road and look at a six-foot fence. I mean, I don't think so. So anyway, it's more in keeping with what Weiss looks like, I think.
Okay, I understand. I appreciate the different thoughts. Aren't some, some of these issues, screening and the like, are they truly, wouldn't be addressed later in, in the process?
They are. Yeah, they are. But it's easy for you to know now before you get to that point. I mean, it just is. I mean, we, we are doing our best up here with, with the limited amount of tools that we have as a planning commission to try to do the best we can, getting, getting the best for the community. And we have been as successful as we can be because of the developers, because of developers. We are completely developer-driven here, period, end of conversation. I'm going to say we're at the mercy of developers. But what happens is typically, when a developer comes here, they have a plan. Here's the plan. And if you've not been here long enough, you might want to say, well, reach under there and get that secondary plan that might be a bit better, that might be a little more palatable, if you would. And it's not, there's a fine line up here for us to ask these questions and get, you know, you hear them and then you'll do what you're going to do. I can't extort from you. I can't, I can't say, this is what I want, and if you do that, I'll vote that way. I can't do that. But I only, I can only do the best I can for the community that I live in by having a conversation. I can't do this by Zoom. I can't do it by text. I can't do it by email. This is the only way I can do it, and it's the only way you're going to hear me, you know, when I, when I have these, this situation like this. So you're going to do what you're going to do, and then down the line, you're right, there'll be, there'll be more, you know, discussion for you folks, but you will have heard me, so.
And I appreciate that.
Yeah.
And it's-
Thanks.
But I guess my question is, are we, are we cutting too fine of a, of this list of, you know, conditions? We're welcome to hear the conditions, I just, but are we going to flesh them out so we can understand what we're, we're looking at?
You more or less heard, you know, when we talk about the safety, you know, nobody wants to see a white, I call them hurricane fences, you know, but keeping with the look of your shopping center, you know, it's, it's, it's easy to do, but the, the traffic study is, is, is the main, you know, that we're worried about tonight. And maybe that private entrance, entry sign off of your road.
But it seems like these four items could be a condition of your approval eventually. I mean, it's not something we have to revise a site plan at this point to show a sign and a fence and, you know, we're, we're, we're at concept level stage, right? So all that would be included on the major site plan, addressing conditions of this board.
Yes, sir.
So I think that's what we're trying to get away, get out of tonight.
Yeah, my biggest issue is level, this level of service. This level of service currently says it's a D. Village Center requires a C, and that's not what I see before me. And so I do believe that the, the, the traffic study, if, if you're correct-
Wasn't that corrected by Mr. Lenhart that it was a D was in there?
I'm just looking at what I have in front of me, John. I'm not going to get in an argument with you.
No, I'm just saying, for the record.
Yeah.
He said it was a C.
Okay.
Then that should bear itself out.
Yeah.
But you're correct, all of that stuff you mentioned could be a condition.
Okay. Yeah.
All right, do we have a motion to continue it?
Need a D.
Okay, hold on. Where, where's Mr. Hauser? Oh, I thought he'd run away. I looked over there and-
I thought if I moved to the other side, you might, I might escape.
We all right with all this?
Yes, I, um, seems like the applicants are going to consent to the continuance. It seems like the commission has done a fairly good job of laying down things for the applicant to work with it, and you haven't heard no refusals to it. Just, um, like Ms. Glenn is saying, just make sure that we get a continuance date to a date certain on the record and we're good to go tonight.
Ms. Glenn, haven't seen you for a while. Come up and give us a date that we can continue this to.
So, I can't do this. I'll stand on my tippy toes.
Give her a stool.
So, thank you. So January 22nd, but maybe that's too soon?
No, is it too soon for you?
That too soon?
Too soon for you.
With the traffic impact study having to be created, given to S H A for review, D P W?
Well-
You tell me.
I, I think it would be fine. It's state highway, it wouldn't even require a state highway study. They might look at it and say they're fine with it. I, I think they probably would not even refer it out internally for review. D P I certainly, you know, it's, it's not going to be a large study, so it should be fairly easy to review.
Okay, so if, if you think January 22nd will work, then-
Okay. Can I get a motion to continue this to January?
Is there, is there no sooner available date?
That was, is that your, is that the, the best available date?
Do you think you can do it sooner?
I can, yes.
In December?
What's, what's your date?
December 18th.
I can have it ready in two or three weeks at the most, and then, I don't know how long D P W needs to review.
Does S H A want to review it? They typically do.
We would want it sent to them.
We could send it to them and-
And they want 45 days.
Typically, they do for, for larger studies.
So, so I'm thinking that December's not okay. I think that's going to be pushing it.
I think you do.
And you're going to come back here and have to ask for another continuation, is my thought.
Don't do that.
And you've had to do that before, where you had to come back and ask for-
But if you want to, that's fine.
Another continuance.
I personally haven't, but thought it was, anyway.
What's the decision? So the, so the question, if, if, if we can't get it done on the 18th, there's a, we have, we can do, request a continuance, would you, I'm assuming you would grant it?
And you can do that.
But just remember, if you can't get it done on the 18th and you have to contend, request a continuance, it won't be January 22nd because that date's going to be taken. So it could be March, could be, who knows, but it, it won't be January.
I know, I can't, I can't speak for-
State highways approved the concept plan as we've submitted it, didn't require a traffic study. We can submit it to them, but, but, you know.
It's a little bit of a wild card.
How much of a wild card?
And-
Date certain.
What's it, January? All right.
You said 22nd.
Somebody make the motion to continue this to January 22nd.
Move that we continue until January 22nd, which is a date certain.
Motion, motion was made by Mr. Evans and the second was by Ms. Roback. All in favor of that, I'll just, I'll go real, roll call.
Can I ask for clarification?
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure that the, the continuation is really just so that we can prepare and present a traffic study.
Yes, sir.
So these other conditions, we, we can be a condition of the approval.
Yeah.
I mean, we can, and I'm sure how we, I guess we just get, get that information.
You know how to work that out.
Okay.
Okay. Roll call vote. Guess what, Mr. Van Kirk, you're number one tonight.
Aye.
Your turn. Ms. Roback?
Aye.
Ms. Summers?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. St. Clair?
Aye.
And myself. Okay. Should be good. Mr. Hauser, might there be the possibility some of these members might not be sitting on this board on January the 22nd? Can we ask said people to come back for that?
Now, in my two years in county government, I haven't had to confront this issue yet.
I like giving you stuff that-
It's good for highlighting that. That's something I'll have to get back to you about, though.
Because it's always after, you know, I mean, it's the first of the year, we have board members that, that are not going to be here. Mr. St. Clair will still be here as, you know, an alternate, hopefully by the time he's going to be a full-sitting board member. Just, can you look into that just to see?
Will do, sir. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
And if there's a, there's a problem, please get in touch with the applicant at first because we need to, we need to make this work. It's a very important thing. Thank you, sir. Okay. We voted. Any other business? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Have a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.